Yeah, a little confusion there.
We've had a lot of it already.
Welcome to our meeting. I'll tell you, the, you know, the long afternoon session sometimes, you know, plays on me. What could I tell you? I do apologize. At this point, if we can go ahead and call this the order, and we're going to ask Council Lady Sabrina Wooton to do our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, for this is the day that you have made, and we will surely be glad and rejoice. We rejoice because we're here, we rejoice because we are safe, we rejoice because we are healthy, and we thank you for this moment in time that we're gathered together for the business of the great city of Virginia Beach. Let your presence be with us today as we look at the matters on the agenda. Give us discernment, give us understanding, give us wisdom, and help us to make the right decisions. Guide our decisions, Lord God, with prudence and understanding and compassion and wisdom. Let this time, Lord God, be used for great purpose and great understanding. Thank you for those who've gathered here today and taken time out that are scheduled to be here. Thank you for our staff and public safety and those who support us. We thank you for their service, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, everyone's present.
Okay, do we have a motion for the certification of the closed session? Okay, the vote is open.
One second. The vote is open.
There we go.
Mr. Branch, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you've certified the closed session and been in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the informal and formal sessions of November 15, 2022?
So moved.
And also the formal session of November 22, 2022?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
Mr. Holcomb, the vote's open.
All righty.
I'm sorry. So by a vote of 10 to 0, you have approved the minutes submitted with Councilmember Rouse abstaining.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, it is my privilege to read a resolution celebrating the 75th anniversary of Princess Anne Courthouse Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department and Chief Andrew Rabineau. Is he in the lobby in the gallery? Hey, come on forward. Hey, good evening.
Evening.
Okay, whereas in the early days of the 20th century, Princess Anne County was comprised of almost entirely of farmland, and was known as Courthouse Station, did not have its own fire department. If a medical emergency were to arise or a fire started in the county, the closest fire station was at the oceanfront outside the Princess Anne County limits. This left some areas in the county nearly isolated. Whereas in April 1947, 12 residents of the Princess Anne Courthouse area banded together to solve this crucial issue that faced the community, thus forming the Princess Anne Courthouse Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas in November 1947, the squad was officially chartered by the Commonwealth of Virginia State Corporation Commission with Roland West, Herman Barti, Harry Sawyer, Moses Flanagan, Luke Hill, S. Paul Brown, David Johnny Vaughn, Oscar Chaplin, and Frank W. Kellum listed as the charter members. And whereas, as the Princess Anne County Courthouse Volunteer Fire Department sought to provide resources and safety to their community that were met with some challenges, the first being acquisition of a fire engine. Though their appeals to the National Guard requesting a fire engine were not met, local politician Frank Kellum stepped up to help. With their determination and support of the community, they were able to raise the funds to purchase a used fire engine. Whereas, the fire engine was housed in a local barn until the purchase and construction of the Courthouse Fire Station, which is located at the north side of the county jail lodge across the street from the modern-day Shell Station at the municipal center. And whereas, in late 1949, the hard work and dedication from these volunteers did not cease, the new station was built by volunteers themselves and served as multipurpose space for the community to congregate. And whereas, in 1950, Chief West purchased seven helmets, and the station purchased their first used but new to them, Calatlax Station wagon to help with the ambulance, the volunteers continued to go off and beyond by raising funds to properly equip and stock the ambulance and better serve the community. And whereas, the volunteer fire department soon began receiving communication equipment from Princess Anne County. The order in which the systems were scheduled to be installed would determine their station number. Princess Anne Courthouse was the fifth station to receive their equipment. And whereas, in 1963, Princess Anne County merged with the town of Virginia Beach to create the independent city of Virginia Beach, the area surrounding Station 5 would become the Virginia Beach Municipal Center. And whereas, the Courthouse volunteers would soon modernize with their purchase of a big engine in 1967 and build-to-order ambulance in the 1970s, as the city grew, a single-paid firemen was added to the Monday-through-Friday 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. shift to assist the volunteers. Shortly after that, the department would enhance their skills with educational programs and certifications. And whereas, by 1988, 33 members of collectively volunteered 3,800 hours serving the 4,500 families that resided in the immediate response area. And whereas, fast forward a few years ago, the station would be responsible for larger events such as the Punggol Strawberry Festival and the events held in the newly constructed Virginia Beach Amphitheater. The station would continue to grow and meets the needs of the surrounding area as it expanded and welcomed new residents. And whereas, Station 5 would soon become the third-largest volunteer rescue squad among the other 10 operating in the area. And whereas, Princess Anne Courthouse Volunteer Rescue Squad celebrates 75 years of operation this month. And whereas, while we reflect on the contributions of this organization has made to our community, we would like to take a moment to reflect on their rich history. The foundation of the department was built on the needs of the community. Residents took it upon themselves to take care of one another. As departments grew, their core values never faded. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council congratulates Princess Anne Courthouse Volunteer Rescue Squad and Fire Department on its anniversary and longstanding commitment to the city. Be it further resolved that given by the Council of Virginia Beach, Virginia, the 6th day of December 2020, and represent this resolution duly signed by each member of the City Council. And I just want to thank you all on behalf of the Council and the city. Your legacy continues to make us a great city that it is. On behalf of a great city.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, members of City Council, Mr. DeHany. On behalf of the Executive Committee, Board of Directors, and the membership of Courthouse Rescue Squad, we like, we're wonderful, like to acknowledge that this wonderful award for us. The membership generally appreciates all of the support that the City Council gives, not just to us, but to the rest of the 10 rescue squads in the area. With your continued support, I hope that Princess Anne Volunteer Courthouse Rescue and Fire Department can stand up in front of you guys again in another 25 years to celebrate 100 years of service. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. First is a public hearing on the FY 2022-23 Virginia Beach City Public School Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program Amendments.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. City Public Schools Operating Budget and Capital Improvement, CIP, amendments, appropriation of reversion funding. Okay, over $1 billion of air tax dollars funds the school board, and a lot of the money is misused. PPEA, Public Private Education Act 2002, created by the attorneys. We're using public education classroom federal money, state money, for private projects. A qualifying project under PPEFA, any education facility, including real and personal property, any building or facility for principal use by any public entity, any public entity, an improvement or equipment necessary to enhance the public safety and security of a building used principally by a public entity. Utility and telecommunications, infrastructure, recreational facility, C-section, Virginia Code 56-575-1, gives this broad definition, almost any kind of capital project undertaken by a public entity may be developed under the PPEA, under the use developed, reference acquisition, design, construction, improvement, renovation, expansion, equipping, maintenance, or operation of the qualifying project. I think it's very important that people be aware that it's a supermajority vote. This is done with the Economic Development Authority, and it's wrong. Sports Center, this something, not something in the water, same thing, Pharrell, he fronts for different development. But $78 million tax dollars were set aside for the arena project, but the Chinese didn't fund it. There was no financing. There's no financing for half the things that come before you. We financed it, and it's not your duty. We have $3 billion debt. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers. Ms. Messner, if you just want to stay up there.
Okay, next is the proposed tax exemptions from real estate and personal property taxes for the following: the Princess Anne Crew Club Auxiliary, the Little Christian Academy, the Coastal Building Industry Association, and the Junior Achievement of Greater Hampton Roads, Inc.
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Okay. I appreciate Terry giving me the list of ones that are pulled. Are you going to reset it if I'm the only speaker? I thought you said I was the only speaker.
You are.
On one item or on all items?
No, ma'am, this is on public hearing.
This is a public hearing.
Okay, because this has already started.
Please go forward.
Okay, which item? Two, okay. Proposed tax exemptions from real and personal property taxes. We should not give tax exemptions to any private entity. It's not the job of city government. And the attorneys work for the city, they give opinions. Colin Staley, who has stated his conflicts, has given a couple of opinions, but he shouldn't, and neither should his staff. Princess Anne Crew Auxiliary, Little Christian Academy, Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association, Junior Achievement, you cannot give tax exemptions to some. It's discrimination. We're taxed to death. People are dying. People are dying from crime all over the city. You don't care. You just have meetings, ribbon cuttings, and you put all this stuff, all this propaganda videos. It's atrocious. So there should be no exemptions for any profit or nonprofit because we have debt, crime, and lack of staff. You know, air police have been short 100 to 150 personnel, and they've been leaving and drove since the mass shooting, 531, 2019. And there's still no justice for most of those people. I think it's like 25,000 is all, you've taken in millions. United Way, United Way, conflicts, Jim Spores, the chair, people on Centerra, city manager DeHany is on United Way, Aaron Spence of the schools is on United Way, Kaufman and Canoles, where Mr. Tower has major stock in, and shares, and the city manager of Norfolk. So people need to know what's going on with their money in our city.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, and the next is the Declaration and Conveyance of Excess Property of 2.25 acre, 2.25 acres city-owned property on Upton Drive near the intersection of Nemo Parkway.
Our speaker is Barbara Messner. And then after Ms. Messner will be Bob Kugler.
Okay. All right. Item 3, Declaration of Excess City Property. The city should not, what, excuse me? Is something wrong?
Okay, please continue.
Okay, I was trying to figure out what that was. Excess property, 2.25 acres, city-owned property, Upton Drive near the intersection of Nemo Parkway. You know, I'd have to drive here all the time. Traffic is unbelievable. The lights don't work. It's high density right there. It's too much commercial growth. Who is it? McCleskey owns most of this property that you keep putting all these national chains in. Yeah, traffic and safety should be number one priority, and we don't have excess land to help developers. And as stated, public safety, you know, there's still no justice for 531, these victim families, and no one on this council and any of the legislators have returned the call from Joe Samaha, who's, you know, working on a fund so we don't have to use the United Way, or build VB Strong Centers to help United Way, or to help Centerra, who advertises. Okay, so I don't, you know, I think it's, you know, you're supposed to be in charge when people giggle and snicker. You don't allow me to speak when other people are speaking. So anyway, it's Virginia Tech, VTV Care. It's a petition to help all mass shooting victims and families and survivors. Okay. It's still 23 seconds, but you're welcome.
The next speaker is Bob Kugler, and then Marilla Stollnaker.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thanks to all of you for doing the job you do. I don't know how you do it, but I appreciate it. I had talked to you, I had presented to you back in March of 2017, our community's interest in the hospice house, and we did a survey, and we actually support it. In the process of supporting it, we also asked a few things, and I provided you with the background papers, if you've seen them. One of the things that we'd like to follow through on is, at that time, you agreed to certain requirements. They're pretty easy to go along with the hospice house. We'd like those to still apply, and they are listed. They're fairly easy. Also, at that meeting, we talked about our interest in the other parcel, because this is subdivided. And that parcel, we had spent many years trying to grow trees, keep it in a parkland position. You had actually put forward a resolution which said that even after the primary, the hospice is built, that we would, that you would see that we continue to have trees on that land, and we appreciate that and want to make sure that still happens. Finally, I'm really here to say, now that there's a new open space program, we believe that that second parcel would fit very well in the open space, and we ask you to consider that when you do look at the open space applications, because we think not only is this a good place, consistent with everything that we've done up until now, it's also city-owned, so you don't have encumbrance by other things. Nobody else has yet claimed it, and we'd love for you to formally consider that as you look at it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Marilla Stollnaker.
Welcome.
Good evening, and thanks for giving me a moment of your time. My name is Marilla Stollnaker. I live in South Shore Estates. For those of you who aren't familiar, it is the neighborhood that surrounds the lake on which this land that we were talking about sits. And during 2017, you initially voted to declare that is an excess land. Again, this is the land that's in our neighborhood adjacent to the lake. I call it our lake because it's the residents who maintain it. When their trash that comes in from Nemo Parkway or from Senor Fox, which is right there, we are the ones who clean it. So I wanted to bring this to your attention. As we develop further, well, I don't want to get ahead of myself, by declaring this in excess and providing the hospice an opportunity to develop there, we're creating an opportunity for more debris and pollution to go into this lake. And this lake is a lake that goes directly into Back Bay. And since the hospice is in fact a medical-type facility, there is a concern for biohazard, not just for our neighborhood that uses the lake recreationally, but as it goes into Back Bay. So the reason I'm bringing this up again, I know I talked about this back in 2017 when you initially voted, but something has changed since 2017, and that is the pandemic. Since the pandemic, there has been property in Virginia Beach that is no longer being used due to the decline in the economic status from companies. So now I believe that there are vacant properties that could be considered for this hospice, and therefore I am asking, and by the way, I represent many in our community within South Shore Estates and along Upton where this in excess property is. So what I'm asking the Council is to consider is to leave this property as open space for beauty, natural resources, and help us protect this lake, again, that goes into Back Bay. Currently, I believe it's being developed by Wilson Townsend, is, I'm sure is not related to Ms. Wilson, because that would, that would be a conflict. I just noticed your name. No relation there. Okay, good, great, okay. So what I would ask is a delay potentially for the hospice to consider different properties so that millions that they are gathering right now could be used to, more towards their residence of the hospice, if they're able to save money instead of building from scratch and using this open source to, I think that would be saving money as well as maintaining our open space. So in short, what I'm asking the City Council is to reconsider and perhaps delay switching this over from excess land and maintaining it with the city and/or rezoning it as residential to allow someone to buy it and possibly just live there and help us maintain that lake. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. Before we get going, I noticed we got a Boy Scout in the audience out there. Come on up. Nothing like putting you on the spot, huh? And bring Dad with you, sure. Part of the future of our great company, Country Year. Hey, what's your name?
I'm Jackson.
Great. And what's your dad?
Jeff.
Good. And what troop are you with?
996.
Hey, great. Well, listen, I just want to give you a city seal button to thank you for being here, and thank you for being part of a very remarkable organization. And, you know, the parents are very, very important with that, too. But thank you for joining us here in our united City Council. Come on forward.
Are you working, are you working on citizenship in the community or communications badge? Very good, very good.
Okay, but thank you so much for coming. Okay, at this point, I want to, Speaker's policy. I want to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representative of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have up to three minutes to speak on a single item. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal session of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by Council at the time you are called. For items placed on the consent agenda, a speaker will have up to three minutes to address any single item. If a speaker wishes to address multiple consent items, the speaker will have a total of six minutes to address those items. Again, the speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter of the items they have signed up to address. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussions and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Do we have any speakers in this regard?
Yes, Barbara Messner. For the consent agenda, yes, ma'am. I understand Ms. Chelias gave you a note with all the items that are on the consent agenda?
She did, but I haven't had a chance to make note of them.
So you'll be speaking on all items except J1, J2, J5, J8, and 9, 10, and 11, and then planning items K1 and K3.
Can you repeat those, because I listened to the meeting when Mr. Tower couldn't hear, and he had to keep, okay, that's all right. It's like 20 items in only six minutes. J1 is pulled, no, J1 isn't pulled, right? Okay, oh, okay. It's ridiculous for y'all to pull these out of sequence and have people wait. Two, amend the city code.
That's on, that's not on consent, Ms. Messner.
Okay. Like I said, people come here and they can only speak on certain ones. Okay, three, establish a plastic bag tax. This is ridiculous. We have, people have come up here, including owners of stores and grocery stores. You can't force a tax on grocery stores, on the private industry. Plus, it's unsanitary. We need those plastic bags because people use them for all kinds of things, disposing of trash, waste. And the city creates more waste than anyone. You know, this whole weekend, you have events in the off-season, Public Works, Public Safety, everybody has to work. It's ridiculous. We don't need year-round tourism. So I oppose the bag tax. Okay. Four, boards and commissions. You shouldn't be appointing anyone. It's your job to respond to the citizens. And, you know, all this stuff on the noise and everything, we don't have to fill out a survey. We come here and, and Mr. Moss talked about, oh, this was the best he's ever done. He has my email. He hasn't emailed me. He blocked me from his Facebook page. You don't have public engagement, and you don't do studies that are skewed so you can get your buddies to vote for you and to take up time for all these meetings. Okay. Six, seven, city-owned property. Authorize city manager Duhany, who has all these conflicts I just mentioned, to sell excess property. We don't need to sell it to private individuals. It's our land. It doesn't belong to you or the Development Authority. Seven, okay, jumps down to 12. $3,575,692 from VDOT for roadwork. Traffic signal rehabilitation project phase two, street construction phase two. Repurchase a bucket truck and street light parts. This is insane. Roads are horrible. It's nonstop construction. It's nonstop sewer breakage, all this stuff. It's just, it's outrageous. Okay. 13, $750,000. Commonwealth Opportunity Fund for Development Authority. We pay for their rent at Town Center. We paid for five parking garages for Town Center. We subsidize Town Center. And city manager, deputy city manager, Taylor Adams, is the Director of Economic Development Authority. It's beyond incestuous. It's insane. Okay, 14, another half a million, Criminal Justice Services. Security assistance. You can't subsidize, you can't outsource people to do the job of police. It's illegal. Look at Institute for Justice. They won, they win all these things. Like I said, okay, 14, 15, 16, 17. They aren't, you can't outsource in their salary positions. You just jumped from 40 to 27. Okay, 15, half a million, Human Services. ARP conflict with Ms. Henley, Agricultural Reserve, and Behavioral 17 for Link Services. Okay. Like I said, Human Services, you don't take care of the victim families.
Thank you. Please stick to the items at hand as explained in the reading of the script for conduct. Thank you.
That was the only speaker, Mayor.
I'm not the one that has the problems. You do.
Are you ready?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
All right, under J, ordinances and resolutions. Number three is the ordinance to add Article 16 to City Code, Chapter 35, Ray, establish disposable plastic bag tax deferred from September 6, 2022, requested by Councilmember Tower, and he has requested withdrawal. And once I read the consent agenda, he would like to say a few words. Number four, ordinance to accept the recommendations of the Citizens Committee on Boards and Commissions requested by Councilmembers Berluti and Henley. Number six, the ordinance to appropriate $100,000 for the Tourism Investment Program Fund to FY 2022-23 Convention and Visitors Bureau operating budget and increase the annual grant, Ray, the Neptune Festival requested by Councilmembers Berluti and Branch with Mr. Moss voting no. The ordinance to declare city-owned property at 3,000 Barbary Lane to be in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to sell same to Joseph P. and Amy L. Heilmann. Number 12, the ordinance to accept and appropriate $3,575,692 from the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, for roadway work to CIP Project 10425 Traffic Signal Rehabilitation Project Phase Two and 10401 Street Reconstruction Phase Two and FY 2022-23 Public Work operating budget, Ray, purchase a bucket truck and street light parts. Number 13 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $750,000 from the Commonwealth Opportunity Fund, Virginia Beach Development Authority, regarding award for the Acoustical Sheet Metal Project. Number 14 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $562,485 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to the Virginia Beach City Public Schools as a grant recipient, Ray, 15 security officers and/or security assistants. Number 15 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $440,000 from the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services to the FY 2022-23 Human Services operating budget, Ray, Support Substance Use Disorder Program. Number 16 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $214,809.75 from the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to the FY 2022-23 Agricultural Reserve Program Special Revenue Fund operating budget, Ray, reimburse city for a portion of cost to acquire preservation easement. And number 17 is the ordinance to accept and appropriate $146,220 from the Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services in the FY 2022-23 Human Services operating budget, Ray, Project Link Support Services.
Open a public hearing on, open a public hearing on planning.
Okay, number two, the Princess Anne Country Club, Princess Anne Country Club and Expansion One LLC for change of nonconformity expansion of nonconformity use, Ray, a one-story dwelling for event space and overnight lodging at 3901 Holly Road, 488 Link on Drive, 3800 Pacific Avenue, District Six, formerly District Six Beach. Number four, the Earthskates Enterprises LLC, Saliano's Properties LLC, and Jim LLC for conditional use permit, Ray, bulk storage yard at 619 and 623 London Bridge Road, District Three, formerly District Six Beach. And number five, Fantasy Tattoo Company, WCSC LLC for conditional use permit, Ray, Tattoo Parlor at 1920 Centerville Turnpike Suite 118, District Seven, formerly District One, Centerville. And that is it. Move for approval.
Do we have a second? Any other discussion? Guy, would you want her to make a statement?
I did. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just want to make a statement about item J3, the plastic bag tax, and want to make it clear what the action the council's just approved was a withdrawal of that ordinance. And I thought I should follow up and say the reason for the withdrawal is not because I've lost any confidence in the utility of the plastic bag tax. I think it's still a very good idea. In fact, it's an even better idea now than it was when it was proposed, because many organizations have stepped forward and provided environmentally friendly reusable bags to the community and are continuing to do that. So I think the one possible objection that I thought made sense was, are people who can't afford to pay a nickel for a plastic bag, do they have a way to get reusable bags that they may not otherwise have? And I think the answer to that is quickly becoming yes all over the city. There are now reusable bags being supplied by Lynn Aven River Now and other organizations, and I commend them for doing that. But I think it does need some more public education, maybe some more council education, and we've got a new council coming in. So I urge any of members of the new council to take a look at this. I think it's still, I think it's a great idea. The whole council will bring it back up in the near future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Henley.
I would just like to comment, and I would like to thank Mr. Tower for bringing the topic forward and having us focus on this issue of having our waterways be clean and healthy. And I would just like to mention that at the Green Ribbon Committee meeting last week, we had a presentation from our city staff that is working on this through the Water Quality Division of Public Works. And we have many programs underway that have this as their goal. These are just some of them, that they have cards to pass out to people to help, because as it says, clean waterways start with you, and on and on and on, ways that we can work toward clean waterways. And I think you're right, we need to do more in this aspect, not just with the plastic bags, but in many ways. And I think this is something that we certainly need to put forward and give more attention to, and I will commit to you, Mr. Tower, that we won't stop this effort. We've got to keep working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Okay, voters open.
I vote 11 to 0. You've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wilson noting the withdrawal of K3, K3, I'm sorry, and Mr. Moss's nay vote on J6.
Okay, thank you. Moving back to ordinances and resolutions, number one, ordinance to amend City Code 18-5.2, Ray, business license fees, taxes, and provide revenue offsets. We do have three options. Option one is the $200,000 threshold version, number two, the $300,000 threshold version, and option number three, the $500,000 threshold version. Okay, do we have speakers?
We have one speaker, Barbara Messner.
Business license fees. How many people are aware that Economic Development Authority gives new businesses, new businesses the option of not paying taxes, including global businesses? Steel Chainsaw, that we've been subsidizing for decades, and we shouldn't, no one should pay more than $20 one-time fee to register your business license. And if we want more money, then we shouldn't be subsidizing anybody, especially private corporations. But as far as the Commission of Revenue, who I believe brought this up, do you know we should, all the military that live in this area, and they, many of them vote, they shouldn't be exempt from having a license plate. We used to have city stickers. We should have city stickers so we know who lives here, but you're losing a lot of income Officials, you know, you have special plates, you can park wherever you want. So I'm opposed to giving special exemptions, you know, to anyone. And there's other ways to take in money, so. And this was requested by Moss, Tower, and Wooton. I don't know if someone's sick or what all the engine noises are. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers.
And anyone else? Rocky?
This is the second time I've seen this come up, and it seems to be out of posture every time. And I know Mr. Kellam's here, maybe he can help us, but it always seems to come outside of the budget process. So we're talking about the budget process, and then we're going to throw this into it before even deciding what the budget is. So my question is, with the three options we're presented with, that knocks a hole in the budget. I just wonder what the numbers are that we now have to find with it not being in the budget process? And that's the question I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, should we have Mr. Kellam come up for?
Mr. Duhany.
No, Mr. Duhany? Mr. Duhany, I'm for it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we sent a memo and a package on this last week, and I think for the highest one, it's $2 million to be shared across the schools. So I think it's $1 million on the city side, one plus million on the city side, and also something close to a million on the school side for the highest one.
Okay, John?
If you look at the amount for the offset for $500,000. If you look at the amount on the discussion page, it says for the $500,000 one, it's Under the school funding formula, 46% of that amount would be attributed to schools. That would be $1,680,522.14. That would leave the balance of $1,972,786.86, which is about $28,000. That would leave the balance of $1,972,786.86, which is about $28,000 less than the per-pay period under execution that we currently have been experiencing since July the first. So clearly, Mr. Dehaney offering up school board under employee attrition, and one pay period clearly covers that amount, so it clearly is an executable assignment. If you go and look at the reversion request that we just got from the school board, where they under-executed their budget last year over under appropriation, I think it was $17 million, I think that's close, and then they had over-appropriation of revenues from various sources, meaning we appropriated it one amount, but because they probably did so well on sales taxes and other things, that we had over-performing, meaning budget surplus. So if you look at that, you easily could decrement the reversion request for the schools for $1.7 million, just to round it up, and you easily can find it offset. And since the reversion funds belong to the city and not the school board, we have total discretion for the allocation of those funds because there's no entitlement to the schools. And I have mentioned earlier, the schools, in addition to what we appropriated this year, are sitting on $659, $655 million of funds they can draw upon at the state. So clearly, they're not underfunded. And clearly, when you look at what the impact of inflation and the lack of pricing power by small businesses and the cost of money which they often are having to borrow for operating expenses and often for payroll in anticipation of future sales, they've been the most impacted by the economy and are most in need of relief. I hope that my future colleagues who sit here will look for providing relief to other taxpayers as well. But this is very easily accommodable. If you think about tonight, we're talking about $2 million for something in the water which isn't supporting businesses long term, and this is a small sum of money relative to the money that we spend here on a nightly basis. I think that we should try to get a competitive advantage and show some empathy. Obviously, I would support a smaller amount, but clearly, we have the surplus revenues and the under-execution to grant very robust tax relief that's much needed for small businesses. And I would readily support $500,000, and the money is readily available to do that without consequence to the execution of either the city's or the school board's current budget.
Okay, anyone else at this point? You know, I guess, you know, I want to give my concern about this, and I think a lot of it has to do with timing. You know, here we are at the end of a year coming. We've got a new council coming on board. And then, once again, our decision is going to impact the future council going forward and have some type of influence. You know, one way or the other, discussions whether we can get money from school board or not remains to be seen. Okay? So at this point, I'm just reluctant to vote for this at this point until we've got a council retreat coming up, and then we also have budget discussions. Okay, Mr. Ralph?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listen, I think this is a very important piece of legislation we have to find relief for our small businesses and businesses throughout our city. And while we have the opportunity to have the Commissioner of Revenue here, I think we should hear from him, and he can explain this ordinance better. So, Mr. Kellum, can you please come forward to the microphone and explain to our city and perhaps this council in more detail on the benefits of doing this now and why, when you look at the calendar, your calendar, when you associate these fees out to small businesses, why this comes up time and time again each year around this time so businesses can have that relief during the calendar year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Ralph. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to address you on this issue. I appeared before you on this same issue last December, and there was a similar argument where it was not considered as part of the budget for fiscal year 23, 22. And I informed you at that time that it is a calendar year tax. I begin selling the business licenses for the upcoming calendar year on December the 15th. So for the 2023 business license, I'll begin selling those licenses on the 15th of this month. This is the same point that I made last year, and you agreed to consider it as part of the budget, which would have covered it, but you did not consider it. So I'm back again this year. I think that one of the compelling reasons last year was, coming out of COVID, we were not certain about how small businesses were being affected, but we knew that there was an intense effect in our community on them. But there's another thing that I think is very important as well. Right now, 64% of our businesses are qualifying for a minimum business license. Traditionally, 75% have done that over the last 20 years. When you take the impact of inflation in 2022 and 2022 numbers being the basis for the 2023 license, small businesses, along with all businesses, are going to have the impact of a higher business license. So I propose $300,000 as a threshold. There have been two other proposals in here. Vice Mayor Wilson had talked about, what do we do with 200,000? So we have 200,000, 300,000, 500,000 as options. The 300,000 would bring you in just under $2 million, and you can look at the numbers in your agenda to see how that would affect the school funding formula. The growth of the revenue is over $2 million a year and has been for over 20 years. I'll end with this. We are in competition, not just with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, not just with the state of Virginia or Mid-Atlantic region, we're in competition with the world. And I think that we need to look to do what we can to make it easy and efficient and quick for people to start a business. And we're not trying to put people in business or allow people to get in business and stay in business that really don't pass muster. We're trying to make it simple and efficient for them to do that. We have a process where people can apply online to get their license now, and almost half of my businesses or of the businesses in the city do that. And I can just tell you that going into 2023, if we have less than two-thirds of our businesses qualifying, when we normally have three-quarters of our businesses qualifying for a minimum license, it's going to be a lot of friction. And we missed the boat last year. I ask you not to miss the boat this year.
Thank you, Mr. Kellum. Members of city council, throughout this pandemic, I think this body has done a great job of sustaining our local economy by providing resources and funding to help those businesses out, help our community out, and well of access of $20 million. As Mr. Kellum stated, you know, we missed that opportunity last budget cycle. Now, we're on, coming on the outside of this pandemic, but we think we all understand there are still families, there are still businesses, there are still members of our community who are still trying to recover from that business, from that pandemic. And now, when you toss in the rise of inflation and all these issues, and, Mr. Mayor, I've heard you state many a times, small businesses are the backbone of our local economy. This is a way to provide those small businesses a strong footing so they can sustain themselves during the tough economic times that we're having today. So with that, I always try to find a middle ground. As Councilmember Moss stated, we can certainly be at the $500,000 range, but I think I am comfortable with the $300,000 range as well as a good middle ground to provide that relief. Thank you.
Okay, Rosemary.
Thank you, Phil. Obviously, I'm very supportive of small businesses. That's why I led the charge with the General Assembly, so that a new business, a new business starting up wouldn't have to pay the B-pole tax for the first two years. And not every locality in Virginia does it, but we had the local opportunity to do it. And then I pushed it through our council so that we can do that here in Virginia Beach. And last year, you came up with three tax cuts, and we went forward with two out of the three. So we, it's not like we didn't do anything last year. We did provide tax relief in two different areas. And looking at the budget last year, we had a lot to consider because we had the bond referendum, we had rising assessments, we wanted to keep the real estate rate flat at 99 cents, and we also had a historic pay increase for our, for our employees. And so the manager had proposed a dollar one something, and it turned out we needed, we had to find out, we had to find $16 million. I remember that $16 million. But it grew because we decided that $12 an hour was not enough for our part-time workers. If we were going to keep our part-time workers, we wanted to make sure they had more, so we raised that to $15 an hour, and how much, was that another $2 million?
Vice Mayor, I think that raised it to about 18 and change.
Yeah, so all of a sudden, now we had to find $18 million to try to keep it under the 99, to keep it at 99 cents. So it's not that I have a problem with this. I would like to look, again, look at it holistically when we're trying to look at all of the needs of the city and consider it. And I give you my word that I certainly gave it fair to you, like we did last year. We gave you two out of the three that you asked for. So I'd like to make a motion that we put this off until the budget cycle and to consider it with Mr. Dehaney's budget when he brings it forward in the spring. Can I get a second?
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I have a substitute.
Okay.
I substitute motion to adopt the $300,000 option and to avoid people's. Adopt the $300,000 option to address people's concerns about schools, though they are flush with cash. One pay period of under-execution payroll is $2 million, so we can absorb that total cost on the city side and then deal with it in the future. But, Mr. Kellum, I do believe there was a date certain by which we had to adopt that this calendar year in order for you to be effective, to have it in place in the next calendar year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we delay, it really is a two-year delay in terms of relief to the businesses. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'd like to go back because I think it's, that sometimes people get talking and they forget whose money is, the surplus money is. It's really the people's money that's the surplus. So if you go back to the section that was public hearings and you see where the over-performance of revenue, forget under, just talk about money we didn't think we were going to get last year, just on the school side of the funding formula, that was $27,222,401. Now, the city side of that, that's 56, 54%, the city side of that is $31,956,731, for a total of $59,179,132 that we received in revenue that we didn't anticipate even getting when we adopted the budget. And people now are telling us at this dais that, oh, that $2 million out of $59 million is something that we can't address. But yet, tonight on our agenda, we are appropriating something that wasn't in the budget when we started in May, $2 million for something in the water. We don't have yet any geographical boundaries for the festival event. We don't have any idea of what the in-kind expenses will be for overtime or whatnot, but we have no compunction for voting on that tonight. But yet, we can't provide $2 million of tax relief to our small businesses when we have a surplus, and this isn't all the surplus we have, but at least $59,179,132. There's no reason not to provide this tax relief. There's no reason to go another year and not provide it. We have the money, and you can do it entirely on the city's side. We are under-executing payroll every two weeks by $2 million. We can do this, ladies and gentlemen, and if we don't, we're not showing much empathy for small businesses, and the reasoning I've heard don't add against the facts.
Okay, there's a motion for, a seconded motion. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Two seconds. Okay, any other discussion on the alternative motion?
I'm sorry, may I get clarification on the motion? Which option?
The $300,000 option.
Option two, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think it was also that the city is totally going to absorb that. I'm sorry, that sort of broke it right there.
If I may, line 42 of the $300,000 threshold has the offset total, and so in essence, you would be striking the portion that allocates that between the city and schools and make it wholly on the city's side.
Well, I know that's not what, that's what I didn't move. I know that some people, I would love to split it, but some people felt like the schools, despite their fresh cash, didn't want to do something without an input. And if we can under-execute payroll, $2 million every pay, only pay period we had so far, it's at least probably $15, $16 million. Let's not, let's not let 46% of $2 million get in the way of providing needed tax relief. It's just not worth arguing over. We can deal, the next council can deal with that $48, $3 million.
Okay, any other discussion? You know, I guess my, my point, I wish we had this discussion in no, not at the very last minute. That's the big problem on that one.
I got on the agenda as soon as I could.
You know, being backed into a corner is not my way of doing things. Okay, votes open on the alternative.
This is the motion.
And the substantive motion.
So by a vote of four to seven, it has failed.
Okay, we go back to the primary motion to defer this?
Discussion.
Or to move, to move it to?
I asked for the, to postpone this until the budget time and for the city manager to put this under consideration when he does his budget.
We had a motion, I think Mr. Bellucci was the second.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have discussion? Thank you. You know, once again, our small business, businesses in our community, they need relief now. Not two years from now, not next year, but now. There's no telling what this economy, and the forecast doesn't look well, it'll look like six months. And so among the things that we could have, and I know, and the sad thing about this is, to be completely transparent, is that politics have gotten in the way of serving our community. This body's serving our community. Many of the men I know, Mr. Kellum is a Democrat. Majority who voted there are Republicans. That should have no bearings on whether or not we provide resources, support for our This is supposed to be a non-partisan body. And time and time again, what I have seen is our community suffer at the hands of politics. Politics, it makes no sense. We have the resources to take care of our communities now. We refuse to do it. We have the resources to design new schools, Title I schools in underserved communities for money that was already budgeted and allocated for. We didn't do it. But yet, today's paper, there was an article about buying a hotel. Priorities are wrong here. That is wrong. I want to work and support whoever stand that they can provide resources to our community. I don't care what their party affiliation is. Does it help our community or not? And we have an opportunity to help our community once again, and yet, the can is kicked down the street. So the next council that'll come up on here on January 1st, it'll be that next December, hopefully it'll pass something in the spring. It will have to be in December, but if it is, it'll be the same thing. But there's a change on the way. You all. You all voted. You all voted for it, James. Five new members here. Hopefully, this won't be repeated.
Phil, you and I have been friends since 1999, when you first decided you wanted to run for the Commission of Revenue. This is nothing partisan about this. You know, we've been friends a very, very long time, and we've, we've supported you for years. So I just want to make it clear, this is not a partisan vote.
Vice Henry.
I would just like to say that I would have been able to support option one, but beyond that, I just don't think out of the budget process, we should go so far, option And I think, you know, we could have absorbed that somewhat, but I just don't think we should go much beyond that in the middle of the budget system. And nothing partisan about it at all. It's just, we are acting out of the budget cycle, and we're doing an action that's going to have continuing impact. I don't think we can do it without a lot more deliberation than this has had. That's why I would have done option one, but beyond that, I just can't do that.
Anyone else?
Sir, can I make a substitute? Option one.
No.
No, you don't get to decide that. You're not a strong mayor.
No, but I tell you.
You don't get to decide that. I have, I've placed amendment on before this body, either it gets a second or it doesn't.
Second.
You're not a strong mayor. This is a body, it's a council.
No, but I'm not divisive either, Mr. Rouse.
Defisive for the secondary motion?
Okay.
What's the question?
What's, what's the question you want to bring?
There's an amendment, a secondary amendment for option one.
Okay.
You can have a, you can have a new substitute motion because the former substitute motion was voted.
Okay. Howard, make an amendment if you'd like.
I did.
Okay.
I'm, didn't we have, already have a motion on the floor? Oh, and then a substitute, okay, sorry, nevermind.
Okay. You know, Mr. Rouse, could you do me a favor and clarify what your, you know, amendment is?
Yes, sir. Second substitute motion for approval of option one.
Okay, we have a substitute motion for option one approval. We have a second. Okay.
Mr. Moss.
All right, let's go ahead and vote on that.
Okay. Mr. Tower, may I have? By a vote of six to five, the substitute motion has carried. So now, that now becomes the main motion, correct, Mark?
Okay, that becomes the new motion, Mr. Holcomb.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a comment that the only thing partisan about this is that we have a nominee for Virginia State Senate on the Democratic side of the House making it an issue of what we're going to vote for and how we care about our citizens. That's the only thing that I see partisan about this, and I'm glad that we can help our small businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb, for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Okay, at this point, we have, this is now the main motion that we vote on. Okay, we now vote on the main motion to approve option.
Vice Mayor Wilson, may I have your vote, please?
Yep, you got it.
Thank you. By a vote of 11 to zero, option one has been approved.
And folks, you know, this is, let me just say, I appreciate the tenor of the delivery of this body. I think what we did here was effectively discuss among each other, you know, options. I thank Ms. Henley for bringing it forward. And yes, Mr. Rouse, you know, thank you for your substitute. You know, I think this is something we could all live with. But in the future, as we discuss these budget-type items, you know, I don't think we can really afford to wait to the last minute. Thank you all very much. And let's go ahead and move on now to ordinance number two, which is to amend City Code, Section 23, Article II, Ray Noise Ordinance requested by Council members Moss and Tower.
Our speaker is Robert Good. After Mr. Good is Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. First off, I appreciate all the hard work you do for us. I've been in this city for almost 50 years. Now I have some good citizens that are also living in the city. I wanted to voice my enthusiastic support for this amendment. It's well-written, it's well-thought-out, in particular, Mr. Moss, Mr. Tower, and Mr. Stiles, working so detailed in it and its implication. I think it's going to work out just fine, and I just wanted you all to know that, that I enthusiastically support it. I hope you pass it, and I hope you have an effective date of maybe January 1, 2023. Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner will be Brian Mosh.
It's torture watching your games and changing it and then allowing people to grandstand who aren't even running to stay in their seat and grandstanding, violating the Hatch Act, and other people who have major conflicts with the school board and Dominion and everything else, and they're still, they're grandstanding too. So the noise ordinance, I tried to watch some of it. It's, you know, I watched today. But you can't exclude yourself from the noise. There are people that live at the oceanfront. When we had the short-term rental thing, this is the noise ordinance, correct? Okay. We've been discussing this for a long time. With all the short-term rentals, some of those event houses at Sandbridge, you know, they have 20, 30 people partying all night, and, you know, the police weren't doing anything. And when the citizens came, the Sandbridge residents came, when they went home, their mailboxes were vandalized. So, you know, the city attorneys work for you, they're paid by you to give you their opinions. But Colin Staley, who I told you has conflict, speaking of parties, it's, it's not parties, Mr. Rouse. It's politics, and it doesn't matter what color you are, what neighborhood you live in, it's whether or not you have morals. I am talking about the vote. I'm, he acted like he cares about noise. He doesn't even live at the oceanfront anymore. He moved away. So you can't, you can't have events, you should have built an arena decades ago. Everything should be indoors. You know, all these events are to fill hotel rooms, to pay overtime for police, et cetera. We don't have enough police. Take care of our police. Don't use them for your private security every time you run all around town. And, yeah, the noise ordinance, it's still going to be up to the, the police. You can't outsource. You were talking about hiring an outside firm, just like you have outside, you pay for those Teslas, the free. It's not free. We paid 500,000 for it, and you want to expand it for the resort. You mismanage your money, you play games. You know, when something's on the agenda, we should vote on it.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Brian Mosh, and then Joseph DeRosa. Is there a Brian? Mosh? No. Joseph DeRosa. And then after Mr. DeRosa will be Kevin Martin-Gale.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much for having me, for allowing me to speak. I'd like to express sincere appreciation to the council and the office of the city attorney for undertaking, undertaking this constructive and, I think, very necessary revision of the sound ordinance and for being open to public input. While I support all aspects of the revision, I am in particular very grateful for the specific focus on vehicles operating with modified exhaust systems reflected in Section 66, Item I. I'd like to take just a moment to provide some context on the problems related to the issue of these illegally-modified vehicles. First, if left unaddressed, the problem gets worse. If offending drivers see the driving with these illegal modifications result in no adverse response through public safety enforcement, there's no incentive to comply with the law. Through car clubs, dedicated websites, and word of mouth, all of which we've, we have very active here, additional drivers decide to similarly modify their vehicles, increasing exponentially the total number of loud vehicles, motorcycles, passenger cars, and trucks on the roads. This problem barely existed in Virginia Beach five years ago. Today, you simply can't drive on Independence Boulevard, Virginia Beach Boulevard, or any other thoroughfare without encountering these vehicles. The cumulative number of illegally-modified vehicles on our roads will continue to grow year after year, season after season, unless some response is forthcoming. Second, acoustic research indicates the sound generated by a vehicle without a properly functioning exhaust and muffler travels approximately three miles in radius and easily penetrates brick walls and glass windows, making the excessive noise created by offending vehicles audible in homes, apartments, and businesses miles from the point of origin. I believe Vice Mayor Wilson, during the previous deliberation, you had mentioned that people had complained to you about the sound in, I think it was like a high-rise in Rudy Inlet. The, the sound, I'd like to impress upon you, the sound that you're hearing in those, in that high-rise building is from illegally-modified vehicles. You cannot hear a properly-equipped vehicle inside a building, certainly not a, a, a high-rise building. So those are all illegally-modified. Those are, those are not legally, those are not legal vehicles. Third, because any rule is only as effective as its enforcement, I strongly encourage the city council to work with the police department to promote aggressive enforcement of the revised ordinance. I would, I would note that as of July 1 of this year, police and the Commonwealth are now, again, allowed to enforce illegal exhaust systems as a primary offense, and I, frankly, I just don't think that we're seeing that in Virginia Beach.
Thank you, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just like, Mr. Mosh, the noise ordinance, unfortunately, it's not going to do much to help with vehicle noise.
I'm disappointed.
Which was very disappointing for me.
I, I would encourage, if we could, to perhaps maybe address that. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Moss about it.
The attorney talked about it today, and it's probably something we need to take up with the General Assembly.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kevin Martin-Gale. Following Kevin Martin-Gale, the Eric Alger.
Welcome, Kevin. How you doing?
I'm doing fine, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, my name is Kevin Martin-Gale. I reside in Virginia Beach, and I'm also an attorney in Virginia Beach. And I come before you to tell you that I have grave concerns about the supposed improvements to the noise ordinance, and I want to tell you why. First of all, I don't know why we have to have this remaking of the entire ordinance. I heard today at the 3:00 p.m. presentation with Mr. Stiles that the current version is unworkable, but I haven't seen any statistics explaining the one-loss record with enforcement attempts or exactly what is wrong with it, why it doesn't work currently. I also noticed that there is a section that is being deleted at the introduction to this. It's 23-63, taking out the language that "a substantial body of science and technology exists by which excessive sounds may be substantially abated." We haven't learned less about sound since 2009, when the last ordinance was created. We know more about it. And in fact, you've been measuring sounds at the Virginia Beach Amphitheater for over 25 years, for the entire life of that facility. We know how to measure sound. That gives us measurable standards, and it takes away the, the vagaries of opinion. It also helps reduce selective enforcement and discrimination. And I know that we used to have those problems because I was the attorney who challenged the way that it was being enforced that led to the unanimous Supreme Court of Virginia opinion in 2009 that declared the prior version to be unconstitutional. And I want to read you a few parts of that opinion because you're about to make the same mistake over again. At page 437, there's a description of the "across-the-street" rule that was being used by the captain of the 2nd precinct. And there was a trial court finding that prior enforcement efforts were selective and uneven. At page 438 of the opinion, it pointed out that "the objecting businesses and individuals who took the matter to court contended that the ordinance was vague and thus unconstitutional on its face because business owners must engage in guesswork to determine whether certain sound levels violate the ordinance." And then we go to page 440, where the Supreme Court explains, "The reach of these general descriptive terms depends in each case on the subjective tolerances, perceptions, and sensibilities of the listener." We're about to adopt something called the plainly audible standard, where you don't even have to be able to hear or make out certain words, but if you can hear conversation, music, or laughter from a distance as short as 50 feet away, that could lead to some sort of a penalty? So if I am in my yard, sitting in a chair, and I can hear 50 feet away on an adjacent property that someone's having a social gathering that would otherwise offend nobody, but I don't like my neighbor, I can bring forward a civil penalty against that individual. And under the language of what you have proposed before you, that is exactly the consequence, and that is exactly what you should be trying to avoid. I gave you a number of other examples today about how wedding events and receptions and things that go on at the Cavalier Golf and Yacht Club, things that occur at the Cavalier on the hill, things that occur at the Marriott, things that occur at the Wyndham Hotel near my house. All of those would be subject to the type of regulation that I don't think you're trying to get at. I understand there are some obnoxious generations of noise that we hear, but this is not the cure, and we need to drop back, punt, and do it better. And frankly, maybe you should let the next council sit down and figure this out instead of creating something that's a problem and then handing that off. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Eric Alger. And then Jay Jamison.
Good evening, sir. Mr. Mayor, city council, attorneys, my name is Eric Alger. I've been a Virginia Beach resident for 34 years, since the Navy assigned me here. June 1, 2022, I retired from Virginia Beach Fire Department after 24 years of service, being forced out due to city age restrictions. To be clear, I am in favor of the proposed changes made to the noise ordinance. What concerns me is already operating businesses creating noise so loud that it drowns out the noise sources that are addressed in the ordinance. Why this double standard? 19 years ago, I bought my home in Courthouse Forest with plans to retire there. Because of a shared fence line, and prior to my decision to purchase, I sent a letter through city email to Philip Kellum, Kellum, asking if he had any plans for that rear portion of his property where the horse corral stands. I was told that Judge Kellum would roll over in his grave if any improvements were made to that property. In June of 2016, Mr. Kellum presented a proposal to my neighbors and me about interest in building a small neighborhood on that property behind the Kellum Mansion, adjacent to, adjacent to those of us in the southeast corner of Courthouse Forest. Those who live on that property line were really disappointed. A couple of years ago, the Kellum property was turned over to Alex and Chelsea Kellum, and the Kellum Estate venue was formed. The business plan was for an event venue with up to 300 guests. No one told us that this meant live music, DJs with recording, recorded music, loud partygoers fueled by alcohol and DJ banter. Most Friday and Saturday evenings from mid-spring through late autumn, our neighborhood is overwhelmed by loud noise and the noise of partygoers from the Kellum venue. During the week, tent and lighting sounds, riggers, tear down and rebuild those things that are needed for an event. Pipes and other metal material are thrown against each other, creating a lot of noise during the day. I urge you to take a trip to the southeast corner of Courthouse Forest on the right nights and just spend a few minutes listening. Tell us if you think that you would be happy living, living next to this noise. As excessive noise is, quote, "a serious hazard to the public health, welfare, safety..." As excessive noise is, quote, "a serious hazard to the public health, welfare, safety, and the quality of life," end quote, I urge city council to act to protect the peace, comfort, and well-being of the neighborhoods. Rewrite the ordinance to apply to all, including public and commercial entities, not just the private citizens, without regard for special use permits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker, the last speaker, is Jay Jamison.
Good evening.
Thank you, city council. My name is Jay Jamison, and while I'm here on behalf of Ballyhoo's Restaurant, I'm confident that I'm not alone in my sentiment. So I want to impress upon you, hopefully, two glaring issues with this proposal: equity and timing. So how do we, as a city with this proposal, ensure that the restaurant on Witch Duck Road in Ergo Novillage be treated the same way as Apprentice and Country Club? We can't do that. We can say it's going to happen, but we know it's not going to. And there's going to be victims, and it won't be the ones with political capital. We know that for sure. Timing. How many restaurants have shut down through COVID? We can all name them. We don't have enough time to name them. But the ones that survived, they survived by taking out loans, investing in the employees, keeping them whole, right? In the most competitive labor market we've seen in decades, in the face of inflation, right? So even if you think this is the right path, if you decide this is the way to go, a question for you: is it the right time? Is it the right time for small businesses to endure more conditions on them? So, again, equity and timing. Please consider that before you vote. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay. Okay, any conversation? Okay, do we have a motion? John?
I assume my colleague will second, so we can have a conversation. I know that Mr. Tower and I got credit as being the authors of this ordinance, but this was really a task that Mr. Tower and I took on on behalf of the body, trying to find the best common ground that we could find. And equity and timing is important. An equity of homeowners who are exposed to noises from either their neighbors, in some cases it was very offensive noises, I won't go into the details of that, but I think some of my colleagues know the court which I'm speaking. And at the same token, there are people, owners, at the oceanfront, who people want to still be playing live music, not amplified, but saxophones and stuff after 11 o'clock at night on the boardwalk that reverberates off hotels. So I don't know when the right timing is, but what we heard from both residents and businesses alike is, we need an ordinance that we can enforce. I know some people have questioned here tonight whether or not this is overly vague and can be enforced. Well, lawyers have differences of opinion, and I guess that's what courts are for, and we'll find that out. But our plan here was to not have it be effective one January, but something later, probably 120 days from the adoption, if it is adopted tonight. To give the city manager what? Why adopt an ordinance that you don't have the resources to implement? And also that you haven't provided adequate time for what? To educate the public on what is the expectation? I guess if all of us followed the golden rule, we wouldn't be having citizens and businesses asking us to adopt a noise ordinance, because we would be policing ourselves. But apparently, the policing ourselves hasn't worked very well in all cases. So people are looking for what? This institution, the government, to provide a means to have enforcement. But if you don't have capacity and capability, you don't have meaningful enforcement. So the city manager is going to have, if this is adopted this evening, will have the challenge over the next 120 days to figure out if we want to do it in-house, third-party. I think it's important to note that there's two parts to this ordinance, which we didn't talk about. People watched the informal session. There's the civil part, which is a fine for a noise, and that's going to be either done by city staff or a third-party. And then there's the criminal part, which will be done by the police department. But as the city attorney mentioned, our goal here isn't to hand out citations. Our goal here is to get voluntary compliance. And today, we have a hard time getting voluntary compliance, because we've heard this from the police department, because they don't have an ordinance they can enforce. So if there's no consequence for ignoring requests, you don't get much compliance. I don't know that this imposes any additional cost on a small business, because we pretty much kept to the times that we're in the existing ordinance that we don't enforce. Today, at the oceanfront, people shut down at 11 o'clock. The amphitheater shuts down at 11 o'clock, unless there's some special event. But what we did do is we provided a mechanism to have civil enforcement, because we found that, and rightfully so, judges weren't very much enamored about giving people a criminal conviction for noise. And I suspect many of us wouldn't want to come home to find out that our kids had some party while we were gone, and they had a criminal record as a consequence of offending neighborhood party. So I think we did respond to, I think, the best we could to all the inputs. I don't want to repeat Mr. Stiles' presentation, but we held four workshops, I believe, two public hearings, online, for a couple of months of online feedback. So it wasn't like there wasn't plenty of time for engagement. I think we did a good job. I think it is enforceable, but my colleagues will have to decide. I know someone suggested we should let the next council take a stab. I've had some of those people say, "I really hope you take care of this before you leave." I think there's two sides of that coin. But I think that, but people are looking for relief. We heard many stories of people who talked about what they're dealing with, and they called the police today. And the police, obviously, because it's a low priority item, but when they get there, either the incident is over, but also they don't have something they can cite them for. This ordinance fills that gap. And if it doesn't work, like we hope, you know, people shouldn't be afraid to say, "Hey, this didn't work as well as we'd hoped. Let's fix it." But I think to have nothing and to subject people to having no way to provide some peace and quiet after 11 o'clock at night or 10 o'clock at night in their neighborhood, I think that all of us would, if we had one of those problems, would like to think that the city could step in and provide some assistance. And that's what this ordinance does. Hopefully, we have found the common ground. It will be an out-of-cycle budget issue. I think everybody knows the city has quite a few vacancies, so that's, you know, we don't have, I think, a runaround 10% to 12% vacancy. So I think we have a struggle to try to do that within-house, people. And it may well be the city manager will come back and tell us that 120 days isn't enough time to put the capability in place. But the comment that I have made is, the effective date should be no sooner than we actually have the capability and the capacity to implement what we adopt, because people are going to have an expectation to get timely responses to their concerns. And we don't want to be in a situation of setting false expectations. So my motion would be, second, would be that the implementation would be no sooner than 120 days from the date of adoption, with the full understanding, Mr. Mayor, and this body that continues on, that if that isn't sufficient time to bring on the capability and capacity, that that date would be extended until such time as we were prepared to execute the ordinance that we adopt. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Yeah, Rocky?
Mr. Mayor, my question involves the testimony we heard about who's actually going to enforce this. And I've heard that it may be a third-party, it may be we train in-house. As you just heard, Mr. Moss said we were 10% down staffing. So who even knows if we can find staff to do this and how much it's going to cost? So it will be the fact that, de facto, the police department will be yet again the ones responding to this and having to deal with these noise ordinances if we don't have somebody that can respond in a civil situation. So it's my desire that we find out exactly how much it's going to cost and how long it's going to take to fill the positions that we need to do this, and that's my question.
Well, if I could, Mr. Mayor. My recommendation would be to go to a third-party, because I haven't seen where, and no offense taken, I know Mr. didn't take one, that our HR responsiveness isn't going to get us there. So I do think a third-party is the way to go. I think in 120 days, we could execute an RFP and see if that could work. And if it doesn't work, if we can't get it done on time, you delay the implementation date. I think I do agree with you, Mr. Holcomb, that we shouldn't make the effective date before we have the resources in place. And if we find out that we can't get that done in a timely fashion, or if it's a bill we don't want to pay, then my colleagues that sit here in my place, in Mr. Branch's place, will have to decide that they're going to tell the public they should suffer with noise rather than spend money. But when I look at money, that we spend money on other things, which don't deliver a direct relief to homeowners, I don't think I could look them in the eye and say, "Well, because I can't afford to enforce an ordinance, you have to live with excessive noise when you're trying to sleep at night, or have people know when they're out there construction at 6 o'clock in the morning, hammering nails on a roof, you know, when it should be 7 o'clock on the weekday and 8 o'clock on the weekends." I think that this resourcing is not a barrier. I think I talked tonight about the resources available. I think the critical path is finding the mechanism for using a third-party. And I know VCU has what they call a noise van, and I think I might have sent some pictures around of that. I think it's doable, but it will take time to put in place. But it's, the fundamental question, is the ordinance the one that we want to adopt? If we say we adopt it with a deferred effective date, that you have plenty of time whoever sits here in the future to reengage, but what I really am saying is, I don't believe if you defer it, you're going to be able to come up with a better content ordinance to provide interim relief, not it can't be improved, versus what we've got together with the community over the last, I don't know, six months to a year, it seems like, the ones before you tonight. But I have no offense if it's tabled, but I think that it deserves a vote.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify a little bit, if council were to adopt this, the first step we probably would do as staff is really try to see if we could do it in-house, just because we don't know what kind of work this is going to lead to. And if we see that it escalates to a significant amount of work, then we'll probably take on the private contractor, and notify council accordingly. This could probably be something that code enforcement, or maybe even planning, but they all have a lot of work to do already. But it could be something that they take on and get trained between the Law Department and also the Police Department until we get a better sense of what this may mean in terms of caseload to determine if we need to bring on additional resources.
Okay, anyone else at this point? Okay, you know, if I could just, you know, make a comment myself before I call for the vote. You know, I have, you know, it's expressed by a couple of folks here, I've got some extreme concerns about this, and, you know, a lot of it is in the line of First Amendment and, you know, livability, and, but also, you know, my main concern is inconsistent enforcement of this. And I think that was brought up by the gentleman from Ballyhoo's and, you know, some other folks. You know, who's making the determination? Is there going to be consistency? Because I think one of the things, as elected leaders, we have to strive for is consistency and fairness and equal delivery of the actions, you know, that we're going to take. We live in a resort area. There are going to be areas where there's going to be significant noise, whether it be the amphitheater or everything. But once again, when we have a potential situation of, you know, and I think Mr. Martin-Gale brought it up, you know, a punitive neighbor, you know, voicing a complaint against another neighbor that may not be legitimate, but in fact be punitive. But I, you know, I honestly feel, and I appreciate the efforts of all, I appreciate the intent of all, but, you know, I think that, you know, this particular vote in front of us is an overreach. You know, if the problem were certain bands on the oceanfront playing, you know, unauthorized, you know, sounds, deal with that in particular. But, you know, when we take the broad blanket approach and then try to employ it over a city of 460,000 people with multiple neighborhoods and, you know, multiple lifestyles and things of that nature, you know, I tell you, you know, once again, I think, you know, one of the things brought up were some First Amendment issues. But once again, inconsistent enforcement of it is my primary, you know, concern going forward. Could we do better? Maybe, but I guess what we've been wrestling with this for a long time now. And, but once again, I don't feel that, you know, this, you know, particular resolution we're voting on is an appropriate mission fit for the city at this time. Okay, at this point, are we open for the vote?
Mayor, we need a second. There's no second on the motion. I didn't hear him.
Do we have a second?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it earlier. The motion is to approve.
With a 120-day enforcement delay.
By a vote of five to six, the motion failed.
Okay. Okay, thank you all. Moving on, an ordinance to authorize the acquisition of property in V-Simple and the acquisition of temporary impairment, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Oh, we can't forget this one. Resolution or request of Virginia Beach Development Authority to continue forbearance on the loan to Vanguard Landing LLC requested by Councilmember Henley.
The first speaker.
Okay, do we have speakers?
This is for Vanguard Landing. The first speaker is John Gray.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. A little bit about my background. I have over 10 years of experience serving on the board of a nonprofit organization for people with disabilities, and I have family members who are disabled. I'm also a CPA and taxpaying citizen here in Virginia Beach. I'm going to start this speech with a very simple statement that presents the motion in front of you this evening. The continued forbearance of the Vanguard Landing loan would provide an interest-free loan to a special interest group that does not have a viable business model. Approximately 10 years ago, the Department of Justice ruled against institutional models for people with disabilities. The Commonwealth of Virginia is currently working to comply with that Department of Justice mandate to close these institutions and step away from closed models like this. Looking at the future of this project, it is highly unlikely that Vanguard Landing would be able to accept Medicaid disability waivers. The Arc of Virginia and the Board of People with Disabilities have concerns with viability as well. Stepping away from the human element, I'd like to talk about the taxpayer aspect of this for a moment. Why is our city giving a special interest group a non-competitive, no-interest loan? Why are we letting this go into forbearance? Further, how can the city justify extending the forbearance of a loan that was set in motion eight years ago, when construction costs have increased significantly since then? If you haven't done so already, please take a little time to read their tax returns that are publicly accessible. They do not have the ability to build and operate this type of project. While this may sound like a great project on the surface, it simply will not work. And as a taxpaying Virginia Beach resident and someone who cares about human rights, I'm asking that you please vote no on the continued forbearance of this loan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Eddie Burdon.
This has been going on a long time. This was a special project that Mr. Moss and Mr. DeRosa... This was a special project that Mr. Moss and Mr. Distef proposed. And everyone thought that all the fundraisers they were having around town were going to be paying for this. Debbie Dear started this, you know, I think in Florida. And she gets paid $85,000 a year. It's a $2.9 million loan that the city council approved. And nothing's been built. And as the other gentleman stated, you know, what, what they were going to build is not appropriate for the needs of people in the area. You had a lot of speakers opposing this. Our city auditor and Virginia, Virginia Beach Economic Development Authority are part of this. It's not your job to help private nonprofits. They can get a bank loan, not indirectly to Town Bank, through our city. But everyone should take out a bank loan, and they should be vetted. So, yeah, one of the few meetings I went to, economic development, you had that in the morning. Like I said, Deputy City Manager Taylor Adams is there. Ms. Wilson is there. Now Mr. Berlucci is there. The conflicts are absolutely unbelievable. So I'm in opposition. And I find it interesting that no one is abstaining, knowing their conflicts.
The next speaker is Eddie Burdon. After Mr. Burdon is John Faber.
Welcome, Eddie.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Vice Mayor Wilson, honorable members of city councils. My privilege to come before this body this evening, along with Mr. John Faber, a partner with the Williams Mullen Law Firm here in Virginia Beach, who like myself is representing and assisting Vanguard Landing. John will speak after I do. He is handling the satisfaction of the loan commitment and closing of the development loan for Virginia Housing for this intentional community, which will provide residential and employment opportunities for persons with disabilities and intellectual challenges. First, I would ask that all of the supporters who've come this evening on behalf of Vanguard Landing to please stand and be recognized by the council. Thank you all very much. Counsel, tonight, we have great news. After 11 years of tireless efforts in partnership with the city of Virginia Beach, after facing multiple unanticipatable and even unimaginable challenges, these persevering families, leaders, and supporters of this wonderful project have obtained their site plan approval to create this very, very much-needed intentional community on almost 74 acres of land on Princess Anne Road in the transition area of our city. The conditional site plan approval, coupled with the loan commitment Vanguard has also obtained from Virginia Housing after going through an arduous process of review to finance its community, puts us on the doorstep of a great step forward for our city and a great opportunity for an exceptionally underserved population in Virginia Beach, in Hampton Roads, and in our Commonwealth. Vanguard's chairperson, Debbie Dear, who just last year received from Mayor Dyer the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities Annual Achievement Award, along with the Board of Directors of Vanguard Landing, want to publicly thank their team for their efforts and expertise over all these years. Miller Stevenson Associates, Scott AC, Jeff Farther, Casey Regal, and of course, the late and great Bob Miller, without whom we would not be here. Coventon Hendricks Anderson Architects, Greg Freck Architect, BeGrace Design Architect, Sinclair Pratt Cameron Structural Engineers, Pace Collaborative Mechanical Structural Engineers and ESC Geotech. We also want to thank staff for all of their help, without which we would not have been here. Finally, want to thank Councilwoman Barbara Henley, in whose district this community will be created and will be welcomed by its neighbors. Ms. Henley has been a steadfast supporter of Vanguard Landing's mission from the start, along with the unanimous and unified city council and city management, going all the way back to 2011 under Jim Spore's leadership, when the search for a large, suitable piece of property for this private project began. The resolution brought before this council tonight by Ms. Henley very accurately and thoroughly reflects the long and unanticipatable journey the Vanguard Landing families, leaders, and supporters have navigated to arrive at this point. I hope someone will actually read the resolution into the record tonight. It is very illuminating. I certainly believe and hope that each member of city council understands and appreciates the impact that the flooding in Asheville Park and the resulting years, years spent reviewing the city's stormwater policies and ordinances, and ultimately implementing the new plans have delayed this project.
Thank you, Eddie.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Faber. After Mr. Faber is Tom Moss.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is John Faber, and as Eddie mentioned, I've been engaged by Vanguard Landing to help close the upcoming loan it's going to receive for construction and permanent financing of the Vanguard Landing development. The good news, as Eddie reported, is that the resolution that you are considering tonight has to do with encouraging VBDA to extend its forbearance with respect to Vanguard Landing. That forbearance stems from the fact that VBDA declared a default based on the fact that vertical construction had not occurred on this property within five years after the loan that was made by VBDA for Vanguard Landing to purchase the property. Vanguard Landing is now on the verge of curing that default. And this resolution that's before you tonight will allow it to do that. Virginia Housing, the premier financing agency for affordable multifamily housing in Virginia, disagrees with the earlier speaker's assessment of the business model of Vanguard Landing. They've done a thorough assessment and determined that Vanguard Landing is indeed eligible for purchase money, pardon me, construction and permanent financing. And with the addition of the site plan that Vanguard Landing obtained last week, the site plan approval will allow this project to accelerate toward completion. The resolution helps that to happen because, number one, it encourages VBDA to extend the forbearance so that this loan can be closed in a businesslike fashion. The trigger of the site plan approval will allow them to finalize numbers for budgeting, for contracts, for everything that is required to close this loan in the ordinary course. Second, the resolution encourages VBDA to restore the payment schedule from the original 2014 loan rather than requiring a lump sum repayment of the purchase money loan at the time of closing the VH loan. Now, if VBDA's initial concern was that there was not construction on this property, the better use of the funds from the VH loan will be to construct rather than to make a lump sum payment on this loan. As you'll see in the package, the original payment schedule called for annual reasonable payments of principal with a lump sum at the end. That lump sum at the end has been reduced by a $500,000 prepayment that Vanguard Landing has been, has made on this property, which will again allow it to construct rather than just repay the prior debt. The third thing that the resolution does is encourage VBDA to subordinate its purchase money loan to the construction loan that is going to be made by Virginia Housing. That is a typical requirement of any construction lender, and no construction lender with any prudence would allow that to happen without it.
Would you please explain just what this would do to subordinate the city's loan?
What it will do is place this on a footing with any other normal construction loan, whether made to a nonprofit or to a profit developer. The ordinary structure is the developer acquires property with a purchase money loan, either made by the landowner or by a third party. It seeks construction financing from another lender. That construction lender, because its risk is greater, requires that its loan be secured by a first lien deed of trust, meaning that the purchase money lender needs to go into subordinate position. The subordinate, the purchase money lender agrees to go into that subordinate position because the money that is lent by the construction lender will increase the value of the property. The improvements will increase the value of the property and thus benefit, of course, the purchase money lender, the construction lender, and the development entity.
Is it unusual for Virginia Housing to require this?
Absolutely not. It's, it's not unusual for any prudent construction lender to require this. I don't know of an instance in which a construction lender would agree to be in second position to a purchase money loan. It is the typical structure in any deal of this nature. And all that Vanguard Landing is asking is that VBDA allow that typical structure to close and go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Moss. After Mr. Moss, we have one Webex speaker. Who is Tanya Milling.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tom Moss. I live in Virginia Beach. It's been a lot of discussion tonight, and I'll keep it brief because it's, it's getting late. But while I am sure that clearly a moving case was made, that this sort of project was one of important, very much importance. I have been on the board of a nonprofit that, that helps people with disabilities, cognitive disabilities, and developmental disabilities for 20-plus years. And I applaud anyone, anyone who wants to help because it's important, because these are people without a voice. That said, the point of it all is the state of Virginia is complying with the Justice, the Justice Department, whose mandate is to close institutions and not provide this type of support going forward. Let's call it what it is. It's an institutional campus. It's a closed campus. That says integration is very important. Without integration, they're going to have a hard time getting the Medicaid. The Medicaid license is what's going to drive the whole show. And without that, there won't be support down the line to make the loan viable and to make the business viable. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Viya Webex. Tanya Milling, you are unmuted and may begin.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tanya Milling, Executive Director at the Ark of Virginia. The Ark of Virginia is the only statewide advocacy organization made up of and led by people with developmental disabilities, their families, and allies. We do not provide any direct services and therefore have no vested interest in any residential options. I'm here today speaking on behalf of the thousands of members in our network to oppose the forbearance for Vanguard Landing. The investment in Vanguard Landing is a significant one and therefore should receive the appropriate, serious consideration of its long-term viability. Financial sustainability for disability housing is dependent upon the ability to become a licensed Medicaid waiver provider, an unlikely outcome for this model under the federal home and community-based settings rule that has been mentioned. While we can't speak for the state and we do not know the conversations that have taken place directly with Vanguard Landing, here's what we do know. We do know that Virginia's Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, DBHDS, is focused on becoming compliant with the above-mentioned home and community-based settings rule. We do know that DBHDS is focused on becoming compliant with the Department of Justice settlement agreement that found Virginia in violation of ADA for lacking integrated community-based services. We do know that a well-known provider in your community, Eggleston Services, had to close down a very similar model and sell the 38-acre property due to an inability to sus-, excuse me, to sustain that model under heightened scrutiny, which is the process by which providers of large settings are evaluated for compliance with the home and community-based settings rule in order to become licensed. There's an article in the Daily Press, July of '21, outlining Eggleston's closure and their realignment with providing services in the community. Finally, people with disabilities do have options for housing and services that are fully integrated into community with the appropriate services to help them be successful, including up to 24-hour care. So we urge investments by localities to mirror the investments made by the state by funding integrated models that help people to live a life like mine and yours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Can I please ask Mr. Burdon if you could respond to this issue about Medicare and Medicaid? I'm of the opinion, or have been told and am reading, that the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services issued new guidance in March 2019, making it clear that the settings rule does not prohibit campus settings, farmsteads, and other intentional communities. Do you have the background legal knowledge here?
Well, Ms. Henley, I've got a little bit, but the, and we've been through this the last time we were up here. This is, first of all, it's not a closed campus. And that asked, that, that allegation, I've just heard that tonight. I don't remember hearing that previously. I don't know where it's coming from. And it, the, the group that, there are 124 of these in the, in the country. And we, we went through this the last time. They have to be open, and it is open. And, and we've answered Mr. Berlucci's questions along those lines. And, you know, it being, having other nonprofits in the same, in the same area come along and because they're competing for, like, they're, obviously, we're so underserved.
Mr. Mayor, just as a point, Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, I don't think Mr. Burdon is responding to the question that Mrs. Henley asked specifically about.
Well, partly, maybe I didn't hear the question because it's hard to hear up here.
I just want to make sure that we're following a proper procedure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berlucci. Okay. Eddie, continue.
So, I mean, if I didn't understand the question.
This whole issue of whether or not this type of facility is legally allowed?
Yes, ma'am.
And that the Medicaid, I thought Senator Distef had some General Assembly legislation that clarified in Virginia exactly what was allowed and that this is all covered.
That is absolutely the case, Ms. Henley. And I, I, I'm sorry, we just have to keep listening to this, these attacks on, on Vanguard Landing. You know, it, no, again, there may have been some things on their website, you know, a year and a half, two years ago, that may have given that impression. That's all been removed, and it's, and it was, it was not accurate then, and it's not accurate now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Ms. Henley?
I, I know that this is controversial, and I know that there's some philosophical differences among some people about what types of facilities are the better facilities and so forth. But the bottom line is, is that we have people with special needs. We have many different groups of people with special needs throughout the community. And we've talked an awful lot about trying to address some of these housing needs, the affordable housing issue and so forth. And the reality is, is we have to look at different things. We can't do the same thing, or the, the same thing is not necessarily right for everybody. And we have been working with this for 10 years, over 10 years. I put a little packet at everybody's table because I, I thought this would give you some background if you needed something beyond what's in the resolution. Oh, the cover is just something that we received last summer when we went through all of this from Mr. Sesums, describing what he did at that time with the staff to begin this process. And then I have from the minutes of that year, several things that occurred. The first thing that you will see, and I think this was the first time that, that year that it showed up in the minutes, July 9th of 2013, the comment from, who, at that time, Bill Distef was a member of council. Councilman Distef advised that Vanguard Landing to be located in Princess Anne District and so forth would be coming to council for consideration soon and that we were working on it. And the resolution-- And the resolution reflects several different times in that fall that we had briefings about the project and how excited everybody was about it. Then the minutes from December 10th, 2013, on motion by Vice Mayor Jones, seconded by Councilman Dyer, city council adopted by consent, an ordinance to appropriate $2,910,000 from the general fund to the Virginia Beach Development Authority to provide a loan to Vanguard Landing, Ray, a mixed-use facility for persons with intellectual disabilities. And I emphasize this because this whole thing is a council project that had much review before it got to this point, and the council appropriated the money from the general fund for this land purchase to allow them a interest-free loan. And I compared it at that time to what we do for our fire rescue groups, that we, we provide funding for materials for them, trucks and so forth, that they pay back. But unfortunately, with those, we don't make loans. But because this was a loan and the city council could not make a loan, that's how the Development Authority got involved. This wasn't economic development money. This was money from the general fund, which the city council appropriated for a no-interest loan for this group, for this particular purpose. And it was approved unanimously. But that wasn't the only vote. Well, then, after that, right after that, according to the resolution, as you see it, the Development Authority did make the loan. And then twice more, the city council approved this project, March 11th of 2014, approved the rezoning of a portion of the property to allow the, be one that would allow the commercial participation and the job opportunities, as well as the industrial. Again, it was unanimous by the city council that the rezoning occurred. And then also, on March 11th, 2014, a motion by Vice Mayor Jones, seconded by Council Lady Wilson, to adopt and direct the city manager to a deed of release and exchange of the agricultural reserve program easement so that it could be designed to, to meet that requirement. And so there were three votes of city council, all unanimous, to approve this project. And so it wasn't something that was done very quickly. It was done with a lot of background and a lot of attention to it, and, and it moved forward. And they, they moved forward based on the action of the city council. To purchase this land, we had it rezoned, and things were going as expected until Matthew hit in 2016. And what did Matthew do? In the whole southern part of the city, it flooded that area right around this potential property. The Asheville Park and the Sherwood Lakes got the brunt of Matthew. And it showed that this property had to have other kinds of development ordinances than what we had been approving. And so therefore, their engineer, Bob Miller, bless his heart, and we know that his entire life was, was dedicated to people with special Olympics and special needs. And he certainly knew the problems with the drainage in that area. And so as their engineer, he said, "We're not going forward until we get the new stormwater design guidelines, and we're going to build this property and build it right. We can't build it the way things have been built." And that's why that clause that was in that initial requirement, that they build the first house within five years, was just not reasonable. It couldn't be met. And we all dropped the ball. Probably, maybe I should have remembered that we had that clause in there, but unfortunately I didn't. Economic Development should have said, "Hey, there's a clause in there that they've got to build a house within five years. We don't want them to. We wouldn't give them a permit for it." And they can't do it. Well, anyway, it just escaped everybody's attention until a year before last, when the Development Authority determined that they were going to call that a default. And that's when this whole forbearance thing started. And since that time, we have gotten the new design guidelines, the stormwater design guidelines, and Vanguard Landing is going through what every single developer in this city is going through. They're having to, to adapt to these very strict design guidelines because when we go forward with building, we want to make sure it's not going to flood. And so Vanguard Landing, just like every other developer, has had to go through a very extensive, very time-consuming, very repetitive process of submitting site plans, making adjustments, submitting another site plan, making another adjustments, and they have finally gotten their approved site plan last week. And so now, they can move forward with getting their loan. Virginia Housing, the HDA, is prepared to make the loan, and this can finally move forward. And I, I hope that this is what we all want because this is, this kind of opportunity is important, not only for these people, but we're going to be running into other needs as we go forward with other initiatives we might have for affordable housing. I think we're going to be visiting with Virginia Housing quite a lot, and we're going to find out that this is a process that, that they do very, very well. And if they have approved Vanguard Landing as a good recipient of a loan, by golly, I've got to think they've got a business model that's going to work because I don't think Virginia Housing would make that loan if it wasn't. But we do need to have the Development Authority to agree to continue the forbearance beyond their deadline now of December 31st so that Vanguard Landing can get into the, the loan, we hope, in February, when, when Virginia Housing makes their next group of loans. Otherwise, it'll be another wait. And, but in order to do it, we would, they would like for it to go back to the original repayment plan that the city council instituted when they made the loan and which Vanguard Landing has followed and will continue to follow. But they also gave an additional half a million dollars ahead of time, so they're ahead on that balloon payment because of all of this forbearance stuff. But then we also, as we have heard, need to do what construction loans do. Our loan needs to be subordinated to the construction loan. And I know that's giving some people some issue, and it might mean that there's a little bit of more exposure to the city, but I think the city is going to get a very good product by doing this, and I, I really don't think it's quite the concern that I'm hearing some people feel that they have. But I, I do feel passionate about this. We've worked on it a very long time. They've got a fundraiser this weekend. Everyone should come down there and support it. These people have been working hard, and I, I hope they're finally going to be able to get a, a loan and a groundbreaking, and we can get this done. So if anybody else has any, I would, I would move approval of the ordinance, of the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Anybody else? Mr. Belucci?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a substitute motion for indefinite postponement upon receipt of a second. I'd like to just have a few words to explain why.
Okay. We have a substitute motion for deferral? Or postponement?
Just to be clear, it's a postponement which wouldn't require a subsequent vote. So it would just be Mr., Mr. Stiles, if you wouldn't mind just explaining the difference.
Could you turn your microphone on, please, Mr. Stiles?
So you're making the motion to postpone indefinitely? Which is not a substitute motion. It's a separate motion under Roberts rules that this council never used before, before last meeting, but it is a proper motion under Roberts rules typically. It's not a substitute motion. It's, it's a motion to defer indefinitely.
Okay. So that, in other words, Mark, that's the primary motion up for now?
That is a control, the controlling motion, yes.
Okay.
I will second that for the purpose of discussion.
Okay. Discussion is open on, you know, Mr. Belucci's motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's clear that there is a lot of passion around this discussion, and I'm encouraged by that because what it tells me is that we all agree about one thing, the critical need for services for people with disabilities in Virginia Beach and in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And indeed, it's a national issue, and it's, it's one that I think we all take very seriously and recognize the incredible need. So I'm encouraged to see the passion. I'm encouraged to see the progress that we made, as well as just, as the discussions and, and investments that have been made all around those issues. But because we're talking about a constituency that is so underserved and has historically been so underserved throughout human history, not just national history, we owe it to principally people with, with disabilities, to their families, to our communities, to our neighborhoods, to our colleagues, to just make sure we get it right. To just take the time to listen to the perspectives, make sure we're doing the right thing. We've heard some very serious feedback from reputable organizations in our community. You've heard from nonprofit leaders who have different points of view on this subject. You've heard from the Virginia Board for People with Disabilities, not tonight, but you've heard from them many times. You've heard from the Ark of Virginia, the leading statewide advocacy organization for and with people with intellectual disabilities, with 23 chapters throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. You've heard from these folks time and time and time again. The Development Authority has heard from these folks. And yet, this council as a body has making, has made a choice to not respond, to not even respond to the concerns that have been raised by these organizations. Now, I don't claim to be an expert in these matters. What I do know is that I have a heart for people who are underserved. I care very deeply about communities of people who are underserved, who may be vulnerable, who at times have been historically marginalized. And I take feedback like the, what we received from experts in the field very seriously. I don't know, I'm not in a place to make a judgment or a final determination about what model is best, but this decision can't be simplified into two groups competing for the same bucket of money. There is, as Mrs. Henley noted, a deep philosophical difference. And as a body, as a community, we owe it to each other to make sure that we're being considerate of these perspectives to get it right. And that's why I've raised these concerns and elevated the feedback that I've received from the Ark of Virginia, from the Virginia Board for People with Disabilities, from other citizens, to just try to get these questions answered. And if you recall at the last meeting, I believe it was in September, when this council was asked to make a technical designation, which was represented as the last thing that would be needed in order to secure the construction loan from Virginia Housing. But we know now that's not true because the Virginia Housing document states a number of other things that are required, so, but I digress. But when that technical designation occurred and I raised these questions, the attorney for Vanguard Landing, Mr. Bradon, invited me to send him a list of questions. And I did send him a list of questions. I sent him a list of questions on September 29th of this year. I never received acknowledgement of those questions. I sent him a list of questions on the 1st of November. I never received acknowledgement of those questions. Only after Mrs. Henley raised this issue and indicated she was bringing a resolution forward, did I receive acknowledgement that I sent the questions. And then on the 30th of November, exactly one week ago, I received a document from Mr. Bradon on behalf of Vanguard Landing, on behalf of Vanguard Landing, which attempted to answer the questions. He represented tonight that he did answer the questions. I would submit to you that the question, the answers were vague, they were noncommittal. And then on the specific topic of the questions that were raised by the Ark of Virginia and the Virginia Board for People with Disabilities, they flatly said, and I want to read you the response just to, so you make sure that we're on the same page. "We will not respond to these cherry-picked statements of others out of context or based upon inaccurate or incomplete information. But these are not cherry-picked statements. This is the thrust and the core of the assertions that are being made by reputable organizations. And as a member of council, elected by the people, to make sure that we're doing the right thing as a city, and I try every day to do that, I think I'm entitled to answer those questions. And I know for a fact that the Virginia Board for People with Disabilities and the Ark of Virginia are entitled it. And I believe that my neighbors and this is, and the citizens of Virginia Beach are entitled to a response about those questions, and that's precisely why I asked them." So that's the question about the model. That's the basis for the concerns that I've raised about Vanguard Landing. I would love nothing more than to see services expanded, housing opportunities expanded, and I think working together, we can get there. I really do. I genuinely believe that we can get there, and we must get there because the lot, the welfare, well-being, and care of our loved ones, our families, our neighbors, it all depends on it. And so I'm, share your goal, and I'm with you on that. But there's another aspect to this. There's also a financial and a procedural aspect. Now, on the question of the procedural aspect, I was really surprised to see this resolution come forward from Councilmember Henley, who is a champion of a number of things, first and foremost being procedure. Regularly, do we hear from Mrs. Henley the need to rely on the boards and commissions that we set up, who we delegate responsibilities to, and the need for the process to work to ensure that all perspectives are heard and all people are around the table who need to be? But this discussion has never even been presented to the Virginia Beach Development Authority. The question about forbearance, the question about subordination is one that they haven't even had a conversation about at the Development Authority. And I think we owe it to the people we've asked and tasked with these decisions. The Development Authority has been working this since before 2014, when it was approved. And in a letter from former Mayor Sessoms we received, the first discussion occurred around 2010, so the Development Authority has been working this for a long time. I think we owe it to them to allow them the opportunity to continue to work for it before we supersede their responsibilities and start directing them to do something that, as a body, we haven't even had a discussion about. So let's talk about that element of the procedure. We've talked more about the noise ordinance. We've talked more about conditional use permits for doggy daycares. We've talked more about potential property acquisitions that may or may not even go through. Then as a body, as this council, we've spent talking about a 74-acre, 150 to 180-bed development for people with intellectual disabilities. How could we do such a thing? How could we spend more time talking about doggy daycares than talking about what we can do to serve our family members and our neighbors with people with intellectual disabilities? So if we want to make decisions about subordinating the loan to Virginia Housing, and if that's what we want to do, fine. The public should be engaged in that discussion. The public should have a chance to weigh in, but time and time again, the questions aren't answered. There's an incredible lack of transparency, and groups like the Virginia Board for People with Disabilities, recognized advocates for people with disabilities, are told effectively to go away. We don't want to hear from you. They deserve the right to be heard, at least to have their questions answered. So there's a procedural question. There's a question about... There's a question about the model itself. There's a question about the financial aspects. There's also a question, various other questions. For example, one of the questions that I sent to Mr. Burdon was, and let me pull this up, included as a provision for Virginia Housing, "The loan is contingent upon the developer obtaining required licensing from DB, HDS, and DMAS, designation as a DMAS participating provider, evidence of approval to receive Medicaid waiver payments, and the hiring of an operational programming director with sufficient experience directing the operations of projects similar to the development." So part of my question to Mr. Burdon was, when will those things happen? Don't you think the public is entitled to the answers to those questions in consideration about whether or not to subordinate a loan? Because I certainly do. It's an element of fiscal responsibility, moral responsibility, and general good governance. So we didn't receive answers to those questions either. It's pretty remarkable, when you think about the gravity of the ask that's before us today. But here's the good news, and here's the great news. The good news is, if we defer this resolution, the outcome for Vanguard Landing is the same. Because Lisa Murphy, the Chair of the Virginia Beach Development Authority, has indicated in an email, "Based on their progress, speaking about Vanguard Landing and the recent receival of a site approval, I have asked Alex Stiles to prepare a resolution for the VBDA's December 20th meeting granting Vanguard Landing an additional extension in order to give them more time to close on their construction loan." So VBDA has already indicated an interest in extending the forbearance. They didn't respond to the discussion about subordinating the loan, because I don't know if they were aware that was part of the discussion. But certainly, the Development Authority should have the chance to have that discussion before we've had it here with no briefing, no public hearing, not even the first conversation. So the good news is, if we do nothing tonight, everything stays the same for Vanguard Landing. They can continue to move forward. Hopefully, they'll get their site plan approval. Hopefully, and this would be my ultimate hope, let me rephrase that. I understand that you've received the site plan approval. Hopefully, there won't be a need for extended forbearance. But nothing changes. The only thing that changes is if we do pass this and we circumvent procedure, we dismiss the concerns raised by the other advocates for people with disabilities that are outside the Vanguard Landing, and I respect everyone, and I really do appreciate the work that you're doing. So we defer this, nothing changes. If we pass it, something substantial has changed, not only in our endorsement of the model, but also circumventing the process. So I'm very interested in finding an agreeable way to work this forward for all people so that our continued outcome is that we are able to expand housing and services for people who live with intellectual disabilities and their families. But we must do it in a way that is responsible, that is considerate of all perspectives, and that takes the time to press pause, to not move forward in a fashion that circumfence procedure and could be irresponsible. I've seen a lot of things in the three and a half years that I've served on this council. But this, what's happening tonight with the proposal of this resolution, is an example of brute political force being used to ram this down the public's throat without fair consideration. That's what it is, plain and simple. And I would ask for your deferral, so we press pause and make sure we get this right.
Mr. Mayor.
I really won't prolong things any longer than I have to, but I think a couple of things I certainly must say. When the Development Authority undertook all of this in 2021, there was never any contact to the City Council, even to this day. I only found out about it when I got a call from the media, and everything went on from then. It occurred to me that maybe the current Development Authority didn't have the background that the original Development Authority had, when the money was allocated from the City Council to make this loan and make this purchase, and the Development Authority was just being the arm of the city that could make the loan. And I think that's the important thing. That's what's different about this one. This really began as a city council project, with full city council approval, with three votes. And I really think, over time, with the change of people, that position was just lost. And that's why this resolution is just a resolution requesting the Development Authority to continue the forbearance of the loan, and it outlines the background of all of this, so that everyone knows exactly how we got to where we are and why we are here, not condemning anybody in the process. But it's just that it has been a most unusual situation, with things that came up that nobody could have foreseen, nobody could have done anything to avoid. I mean, we just had to deal with it. And then, of course, you throw in the pandemic, when every nonprofit was struggling, and right at the height of that, Vanguard Landing got hit with a half a million dollar advance payment that they had to make. That was really not something that sat very well with me either. But as far as different groups, I call your attention, because I think you all got copies of this, from the Together for Choice Group, which is a national nonprofit disabilities advocacy organization, and they just happen to have a different opinion from the one that Mr. Berluci has been hearing from. So I think what this says is they're good people who just have different philosophies in the way to look at things. And I think that what we want to do is just make sure we give choices to people. And I really think that all we're doing here is working with the Development Authority in the fashion that I think they're supposed to work. They're supposed to work in a fashion following city councils' desires. And I think we see that when we give them the control over any economic development land or anything of that nature. And this resolution, to me, is simply the city council letting the Development Authority know what our position is, reconfirming the support for this project, which we started in 2013, and just requesting that they continue the forbearance, which would have to be done past their December 31st, 2022 deadline, to allow it to move forward, to get the loan, and then to close it. But they would also, we're requesting them to go back to the original payment schedule, because I think the way the forbearance is worded now, Vanguard Landing is supposed to come up with the total amount of money by December 31st, and that's just not exactly a reasonable thing to do. But they're very willing to go back to the original repayment plan, which was instituted by the City Council in 2013, and then recognizing that the city's loan needs to be subordinate to the Virginia Housing loan. So that's all this resolution does. If it offends anyone, I apologize, but I just thought it was time that we communicated between the two bodies, because to this point, we haven't. And I certainly didn't mean to step on anybody's toes, but I just think this is important enough that we do get it right, and I hope that maybe this will do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Holcomb.
Mr. Mayor, I'm inclined to support Mr. Berluci's deferral, but as I look in the crowd tonight, I see the mother of a young girl that I've known for over 20 years, and I can promise you, she deserves the very best we can give her. And if getting Councilmember Berluci's questions answered ensures that she gets the very best that we can give her, then I'm inclined to support that. But what I'm not inclined to do is keep kicking this can down the road and not getting these folks the care and the love and the help that they need. So I would like to know a timeline of what we're talking about, reference getting these questions answered, because I promise you, if we had a heart like this young girl, we would be a whole lot better in this world. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Berluci, would you consider putting a time on it?
Mr. Mayor, considering the fact that I sent these questions in September and still haven't received an answer, I don't think that we need a timeline. I think the timeline we need to do is allow the Development Authority, I agree with everything Mr. Holcomb said, and he and I have spoken publicly and privately about my deep personal passion to ensure we expand services and housing for people who live with intellectual developmental disabilities. My only concern, as I have previously articulated, is that we make sure we take the time to get it right. And I think we need to allow the Development Authority the opportunity to explore the forbearance, as well as to have the discussion around subordination of the loan and all the implications that that means. And if further council action is required or desired, then we'll have a due course to have the proper briefings and discussions. And so I think it's still appropriate to maintain an indefinite postponement.
Mr. Berluci, let me ask you, would it be appropriate to request the Development Authority to respond within a certain time period?
I think I have no objection to that, and I think 60 to 90 days would be, and I would also defer to my colleague, Vice Mayor Wilson, who is also the liaison to Development Authority, and welcome her thoughts. But I think 60 to 90 days would be an appropriate time for the Development Authority to have a chance to have these discussions. And if additional council action is required, then we can have that discussion. I'm not convinced it will be. But I also think, as I've said before, this is a complex and very serious discussion that we need to make sure we get it right. And it's because I do care so much about people who live with developmental and intellectual disabilities and their families, that I want to make sure we get all that information and take the time to consider all those facts. If I had been here in 2014, I would have asked these same questions if they were presented to me by those folks who have taught me a lot. So, you know, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what the timeline looks like, because we've had nothing but delays and a lack of transparency around the discussions that we've had.
Okay. Hang on one second. We got John, and then we got Rosemary, and then Barbara.
There's a date.
Oh, the date.
Yeah, I want to talk about date. Thank you, Mrs. Henley. When does the Development Authority next meet?
I can tell you. They meet the third Tuesdays.
Okay.
So I think that's the 20th.
The 20th. I would, this is, there's two dimensions to this. There's one, the financial thing, which I do believe the Development Authority can tell us if they're willing to take the market risk on all that aspect, I do. But I don't know why we couldn't ask the Development Authority to convene between now and our next meeting and answer the question relative to the financial aspect, because that has nothing to do with the best source of care. It deals with the financial risk. Are they willing to take it? Are they recommending that restructuring the loan and getting that recommendation? I think we can get that sooner. Do you not think so, Mrs. Wilson?
Well, what I was going to say is, first of all, I had conversations with Mr. Burdon, and I had conversations with Lisa Murphy, the Chair. When I talked to Mr. Burdon, he said, they were getting their site plan approved, which they did December 1st. That was one of the conditions of the forbearance. And then also to be able to get the loan with Virginia Housing, which they had in place. So, I'm not calling you up here. He just told me that nothing had to happen before the end of the year with those two things, as long as they got their site plan approval, which they did a few days after we spoke. So that's, so nothing is critical by the end of the year, according to Mr. Burdon. I don't think there's going to be any problem reinstating the payment plan of the $114,000 a year until 2029. I don't think that's going to be a problem at all. You know, there's so many good things that have happened. The site plan's approved, the VHDA's got their loan, you know, but I think they just need a chance to talk about it. But they have not talked about subordinating the loan at all. But they'll be meeting on the 20th, and then they meet the 3rd.
Well, I appreciate that. I was just trying to understand.
No, I understand, but anyway, I think that will help.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Barbara.
There's an important date, and that's early February. That's when the bond sale is for the Virginia Housing, which they need to meet. And if I could ask Mr. Burdon to please let everybody know what this important timeframe is, otherwise, we're delaying for at least another six months.
The reason for trying to get this done is that Virginia Housing is prepared to go to the bond sale, it's bond auction in February, for the financing of this loan. And so they'll determine the interest rate. And if we don't get this resolved now, in December, then it'll be May or June before the next, and maybe later, before the next bond auction, where interest rates will be most likely higher than what they are now. My conversation with Ms. Wilson was about if we didn't get the site plan approved, what would need to happen at the end of December, which we had talked about, that the forbearance we said all along, we would not, knew we wouldn't get the deal closed for many months after getting site plan approval. But if we can go to the bond auction in February, are we going to get a better interest rate than if it's next, you know, May or June, before we can get there?
Well, I know that there are things, and it's in that letter that we were sent, that's the agreement letter from Virginia Housing, I believe the city attorney sent that with us. There are a lot of things that have to be done between now and that bond sale in February in order to make them, and I think Mr. Berluci referred December with the things that are required. So they really need to get this approved now, so that they know that they're moving forward to that date.
That is 100% correct, from a financial standpoint. What I indicated to Ms. Wilson in our phone conversation, she contacted me, was that if, because at that point, we didn't have site plan approval, that, you know, what would happen if we didn't get it? And so, but we did get it, and now we have it, then the opportunity is, if we do what council, you know, I thought wanted to do, given the history of the project, then we can get on the bond issue at auction in February, which will definitely, well, by all accounts, I don't have the Fed's tea leaves, but I certainly think the rates are going to be higher the further into next year we go.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else at this?
Do you have another question for Mr. Burdon?
Yes.
You mentioned that the, yes, I could, thank you so much. Me too, sometimes. It's just age. But my question is, so then the question about subordination of the loan, is time-sensitive because you have the SEC filings you have to do for a bond? Obviously, you're not, but the Housing Authority is, and there's a red line date prior to that, to have that out there in the public domain. So really, the subordination issue has to be resolved in the month of December, if I'm hearing you correctly?
That is correct.
So in effect, we really do need the Development Authority, then, to make that determination, I think, before the 20th of December, their meeting is the point I was trying to make before. If that's true, we need that answer sooner. And that's a singular answer. I don't know if you have to convene to get that, I don't know how that all works. But I think if we can get that, Vice Mayor from the Development Authority, we could act at least on that piece. Doesn't deal with the other issues that Michael mentioned, we've still got to solve, but that's a critical piece for doing the bond prospectus for the marketplace. Thank you very much.
Okay. Michael.
Mr. Mayor, and I don't want to belabor the point, there are a few things I'd like to say in response to this. First is that we know that Vanguard Landing and Mr. Burdon have known about this since July. I don't know when Mrs. Henley, if not before, I don't know when Mrs. Henley became aware of it, but why did this only come up at the end of November and that we're discussing it now in December? The other thing is that these questions... The other thing is that these questions about financial viability, about the fulfillment of the other Virginia housing requirements, and about the compatibility of the model with the Department of Justice settlement agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia, and with state and federal law and regulation, have been on the table for a long time. We've, I've been asking them for years, actually. I sent them again to repeat, the 29th of September, again, on the 1st of November, only received responses on the 30th of November. So I don't understand, I truly and genuinely don't understand the urgency around must vote for this today, when we've been exploring these concepts and ideas for a long time. I think the public, and because of the sensitivity of this discussion, the public, people with disabilities, their families, interested parties, are deserving of these answers. And that's all I've been asking for. Let's get these answers, and let's get it resolved. And that's the basis for my request for a postponement.
Okay, thank you. Barbara?
I guess I'm the only one who can answer, why is it on this agenda? Well, when I brought it up in November, I was told the council needed to, well, the Development Authority would have to make the answer, the decision. And I thought this was the only way that we could let the Development Authority know the council's position, because I think, I think that's the way things are supposed to work. They didn't come to us and ask for our position. They didn't give us any information about any of this. And so, you know, I kept waiting, and it didn't come. But knowing that they were almost at the point of getting their site plan approval, and they needed to move forward, and this forbearance is in place, that's why I put it up. There's nothing devious here at all. It's just that it's the only way I could see that we could address this issue and bring it out and move it forward, hopefully. And if there's some appearance of some deviousness, I just have to tell you, there's none there. So don't waste your time trying to find it.
Okay, at this point, if I could make a suggestion, and I'll tell you what, I think, one thing, I think we at the DIAS and the folks in the gallery can agree on, we got to get the yes somehow on this. And to do that, we have to establish a path. And, you know, let's be honest, this is a very complex deal. And, you know, if there was simple answers, we would have had them already. But once again, I, you know, I realize the sensitivity of some of the deadlines and everything, but, but once again, to, you know, to really get this right, make sure the ducks in the road, to make sure that, you know, Medicare or Medicaid are, you know, for sure going to provide, because, you know, as a healthcare provider, you know, once again, I think we have to have at least the insurances, not the ambiguity of it. But I am confident that just by, you know, perhaps delaying, but once again, I think a delay with reasons. And I think if we ask the Development Authority to expedite, and Mr. Balucci, I think if we could ask them for 60-day versus a 90, that we can move forward, and, you know, even sooner, if possible, you know, to go get the clarity of what's going on there. And then, once we get the clarity, that we can move forward and expedite it, you know, basis.
60 days is too late. Can we bring you the answers to those legal questions next Tuesday? The ones about Medicaid and Medicare, whether that's going to be acceptable? I think that's information that's there.
Mr. Mayor, I asked those questions beginning on September 29th, and the Virginia Board for People with Disabilities and other advocates have been asking them for years. So we don't need to rush it now. Let's take, let's press pause.
Well, let's go ahead.
Let's take the time, and let's make sure we get it right.
Well, let's get past, we're going to miss the February deadline, so then there's another six months before they can do anything. So then, don't anybody ask, why is it taking so long?
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the table? Okay?
Is there probably no restated?
Madam Vice Mayor, there's no need for it to come back to council within 60 days. We need to allow the Development Authority a chance to do this and determine if it even needs to come back, period. But also, it simultaneously, we need to get those, those questions answered. And I'm, and I'm really frustrated, and I hope you can sense my frustration, I've been asking these questions, only now that there's, appears to be a discussion around this on council, is there a willingness to get these answers to the questions? I've been asking them for, for them for months, and others have been asking for them for years. So I really strongly believe we need to just take our time, get the questions answered, and I don't, I've already described to you how there's no actual council action. This is something that Mrs. Henley appears to want the council to do, to express our will, but we should allow the Development Authority the chance to work this through. And I think the message, I hope the council will be sending, is that we want to make sure we get this right.
I'm just trying to be clear on your motion.
Right, that's right.
Okay. Vote is open. Okay.
The, just the motion was to postpone, correct?
The motion was to postpone indefinitely.
Ms. Miles, may I have your vote, please? Go ahead and close it. By a vote of seven to four, this item has been postponed indefinitely.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, we will work expeditiously on this. Okay, number eight, ordinance to authorize acquisition of property in fee simple and the acquisition of temporary and permanent easements, either by agreement or condemnation rate. Shore Drive Corridor improvements, Phase Three projects, CIP 100381.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Todd Solomon.
What?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Number eight.
Number eight, okay. Authorize acquisition of property in fee simple and acquisition of temporary and permanent easements by agreement or condemnation, Shore Drive Corridor, Phase Three CIP, formerly You shouldn't have to acquire property. If you took care of all of this property, it didn't, we've had pump stations that have been broken since before Matthew. That's why it flooded. Not only the pump stations, the drains are clogged. $567 million that we're in debt for. We shouldn't be in debt on anybody's private project, especially with legitimate concerns. And people with conflicts are not abstaining, and they're speaking. So I'm, I'm really offended by the lack of morality. I can't think of another word. And as I said before, you, you hire planning to help people. You pay for economic development authority's rent and their salaries. They're hired to do what you want, where you want, when you want. And you have all these, you know, retreats all the time. They're in the middle, they're 8:30 in the morning. And you've partnered with, you have corporate partners, Dominion Energy.
With due respect, Mrs. Messner, stick to the item being discussed.
Okay, this affects, this affects our finances, and you're not taking care of, of our infrastructure. So I, I object. And it's ridiculous for people to have to sit here and wait through all your games going back and forth.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
The next speaker is Todd Solomon.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer. Council members, City Manager Dehaney. My name's Todd Solomon. I'm a member of the Cape Story by the Sea Civic Association and Cape Story by the Sea Neighborhood, resident of Shore Drive for 30 years in the Bayfront area. I'm here to ask tonight, I'm definitely not opposed to this ordinance, my understanding, I know the, it's part of the project, it's a requirement, boilerplate type of system that we have to go through. My main concern is this, is kind of the verbiage in regards to condemnation, kind of leaving it as an open blanket effect, that you can come in at some point and do anything you want with condemnation. So I'm not trying to delay this project, God forbid, it's been 20 years, I believe, since it was identified, and hopefully, God willing, it'll be done in five more years. So I don't want anything to delay it. However, it'd be nice if you could add at maybe the end of the second section in here, some words that prevent residences and businesses being condemned. I understand small slivers of property, a curb here, maybe a parking spot, that's a little questionable, but to condemn somebody's residence or a business, and in fact, your staff even mentioned in here, no businesses or residents are anticipated to be displaced by this, anticipated possibly. So once it's approved, can it happen? Can you have the authority or not even have to come back here? It could just pop up someday that somebody's going to be condemning a business on Shore Drive, which we don't want to see happen. So maybe just add the words condemnation of residences and/or businesses is prohibited at the end of it. Just put it in there. I spent 10 years working for a nonprofit for civic engagement. One of the biggest items we heard in a lot of our surveys was mistrust between citizens and government. I know that may be surprising for you to hear, but that citizens don't trust government. One of the biggest items underneath that header was condemnation, because of the fear of abusing it. I think this would go a long way. I know it probably has never been done in the history of these ordinances for these type of projects, for CIPs and traffic thing to do that, but I'd ask maybe you take a look at it and maybe start doing something like that. My understanding is, I think there was an item on here, it was a committees on committees that you just approved for consent. And just a quick question, do you remember what their number one item was on the committees or committees that you just, you know, approved today? The number one item was civic engagement. So I ask again, trying to get the citizens more involved, listening to them, and this is one step, and you'll probably hear in the next two items, civic engagement come up again. Thank you.
Yeah, John?
I just want to inform, we do in fact have a policy that if we're going to go to condemnation, the city attorney sends us a message and notifies us in advance, so that council can say if they have objections to that, so it isn't a carte blanche, there is a current policy that requires that we be notified in advance.
That's awesome. Coming, me just reading it as layman in here, it doesn't jump out, and that's something that obviously you guys know and we don't, but that's, that's great if that's the way it's supposed to be set up, but if you can throw the words in there too, that that would just capture it, and then, and those of us who just see it on Friday and have to come down here on Tuesday to talk about this for seeing it the first time, we would understand that. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
That's all the speakers, sir.
All right, do we have a motion on this one?
Move for approval.
Yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you've approved the item.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of the city right-of-way known as Windsor Crenset. Maintain existing stone patios, stone walls, PVC fence, brick steps, fire pit, wood fence, grassy area at the rear of 3868 Jefferson Boulevard, District Nine.
The first speaker is Clay Burnick. After Mr. Burnick is Steve Gibson.
Welcome, Clay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager Dehaney. My name's Clay Burnick. I've been a resident of the city for over 50 years, I have to say, and live on the North End community. And tonight, I'm here representing Friends of Live Oaks, which is a nonprofit organization in the city, dedicated to promotion, protection, and preservation of the city's official tree. It's a key species in our maritime forests. There currently appears to be no city policy on encroachment into city-owned properties that adjoin beaches, dunes, wetlands, floodplains, other sensitive areas. And these areas collectively provide multiple benefits to the city, environmental, recreational, and of course, economic. And they're iconic reminders of the special and unique area that we all call home, yet these areas are also adjoining and at times may be vulnerable to recurrent flooding and sea level rise impacts. And I don't think I need to remind this body that you have spent significant city resources, staff resources, financial, and time, working with the community to adopt programs such as our beach erosion control and hurricane protection program dating back at least 20 years, the sea level wise adaptation strategy adopted two years ago, the $567 million, $500,000 bond referendum for flood protection. It underscores how important these areas are. So what I would suggest on this application, based on the fact that I've learned that there are numerous other proposals, some of which, like this one, are after the fact, as well as others that are being considered, along the bay and ocean shorelines, that you defer this item indefinitely until such time that you, as a body, can develop and adopt guidelines and criteria with public input and review, engaging the appointed representatives to a variety of your city boards and commissions in that process, and address how the city can execute and enforce the strategy to protect those areas, rather than going in a piecemeal manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clay.
Clay, it's nice to see you again.
Thank you. The next speaker is Steve Gibson. After Mr. Gibson is Barbara Messner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Skip Gibson. I'm here representing the North Virginia Beach Civic League. I'm the vice president of the league. Gary Sharp, who's our president, cannot be here tonight. There's a number of issues identical to this, of beach and dune encroachments that are occurring today. The city Public Works is looking at two issues at the North End, one in which a resident has extended their yard 50-plus feet into the dune to create a private yard. We have another resident that has topped off a dune and flattened it to create a 20-by-50 area. We have two other residents that are looking to expand into the dunes, because there's no public, there's no policy to preclude it. Whenever a resident wants to encroach into the dune or into a right-of-way affecting the dunes, they go to Public Works, and it comes directly to you. We do not know about it until, until it appears on the agenda. We actually had one resident that was planning palm trees in the dunes, which is a nice thing if you're in Florida. We would ask that you postpone this and all subsequent actions, and that you direct the city staff, if someone is actually building into the dunes today, which they are, to tell the real estate office not to work with them to help develop a plan, but to tell them to stop until such time as you develop a policy, you have public input, and move forward. The North Virginia Civic League has met with the Sandbridge Civic League, Cape Henry, Lynn Haven River now, other groups. There's a multitude of people that are greatly interested. There's a multitude of people that are greatly interested in protecting the dunes for all of the reasons that Clay said and many more. So we would invite you to postpone this, delay it until a policy is in effect. Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner is Craig Metelka.
It was nice to see somebody from Friends of Live Oaks. They had all these displays and they explained how important the live oaks are to to stopping flooding. Y'all have destroyed so many, it's obscene. And I believe that the developer of the Cavalier Hotels that the taxpayers subsidized time and time again, you know, that they planted, you know, palm trees. The city parks in rec. Y'all pay and replace the palm trees every two years, and if there's a storm, you replace them, and they're brought up from Florida. It is ridiculous, the lack of care for air environment. And it was 13 million for Pleasure House Point, 13 million to buy the McCluskey land, and 13 million from the trusts for public land. They trusted you to take care of the land, not to build, you know, facilities for Chesapeake Bay Foundation and Lynn Haven River Now. So I'm totally opposed. Thank you.
The next speaker is Craig Metelka. And then Joe Beecham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council and professional staff, I'm Craig Metelka. My wife and I are the applicants for this ordinance. We have lived and worked and paid taxes in the city of Rupiich for over 30 years. This situation arose when we received a letter from the city notifying us of an encroachment in 2020. The fact of the matter is, we purchased the house in 2018. And we had made no changes to the backyard. Those encroachments existed at the time we purchased the house, and as best I can tell, those encroachments have been there for years. Nevertheless, you know, we went through this process to go ahead and ask for the encroachment application. Many of the improvements actually stop erosion because several of them are terraces. And yes, there's some steps attached to the terraces, but they stop the path from collapsing as you can look through the pictures that are in your materials, because if those walls were removed, actually, the path would collapse because essentially it is holding back the sand and stopping erosion. The fact of the matter is, is that although there are some, I understand, that are opposed to this application, just today I received an email from the Ocean Park Civic League, which I'm a member of, that says residents and Ocean Park Civic League board members have met several times with city staff concerning various issues with respect to the Ocean Park beach access points. Well, that was news to me because I never received an email that these people were meeting with the city on these issues. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, at the end of the day, the professional staff of the city and the engineers and so forth have all looked at this process and what was done and the equities of the situation and recommended approval of it. And so therefore, there is good reason for this to be approved, just because it was there when I got here. It was there for several years after I got there, and it had been there for many years before we got there. There are neighbors that may be opposed to it, but there's also neighbors, including my neighbor that's across from the path, who's been sitting here, who is in favor of it and does not have objection to it. And there's other neighbors that are also in Ocean Park that are here to speak in favor of it. And so therefore, like many of the other houses in my neighborhood, and what would be fair and equitable is for the temporary permit for encroachment to be approved. Thank you, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Jay Beecham, after, I'm sorry, Joe Beecham. After Mr. Beecham is Todd Solomon.
Good evening.
Good evening, guys and girls, gals. I've lived in Virginia Beach all my life, and I've been in Ocean Park a long time. And I use a Riley Access. And none of this impedes on that access. It helps the dunes, the way it's set up. It's been there a long time, and the backyard is conducive with Ocean Park, the looks of it and everything. And I don't know if you guys have been down here on 4th of July, but there's a lot of people that use that access. I don't know where those folks come from, but they use that access, and they're not impeded by anything other than that. So I approve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Todd Solomon. After Mr. Solomon is Daniel Murphy.
Todd, welcome back.
I told you I'd be back. Good evening, again. This is the one I'm going to talk a little bit more about civic engagement. If you've noticed, and I'm sure you've read your staff report, but on here, this particular one mentions that there are currently similar encroachments within right-of-ways located throughout Ocean Park. We've heard from the North End, there's guaranteed some in Cape Story. How are all these getting approved or not approved? Are all these getting built? Obviously, you don't know about these. They haven't been before you for encroachments for these approvals. I'm not even sure what's out there that you, I'm sure you don't know what's out there. And I think the time I agree with Clay's suggestion to defer this, but to give you a better handle on finding out what's out there, having more civic engagement, more robust discussions, something that's gonna, you know, figure out what's out there, how you can handle it. Maybe there's situations that will cover a lot of this, and you only have to deal with certain issues that come up. But, you know, finding these willy-nilly and piecemeal as your code enforcement finds this one, and he goes down the path and finds another one and sets that up and sets it up internally, how's this happening? You know, you've got to ask the questions to Public Works or to Planning, you know, why aren't these, why are these people just setting this up and building these things and we don't see about them until something happens? So my suggestion is, again, put together some type of a committee. You could even have, your encroachment policies now have the ability to allow setup of tables and businesses on sidewalks right now. You've discussed that, and that's an internal thing now that happens without having to come before you for every vote for every table that gets set up. I would, maybe something like that will work for this, who knows? But again, having these piecemeal in a neighborhood pop up on, once again, on Friday, because these encroachments, as you know, only have to be approved by you. They don't go above any other board, any other commission, any other civic process other than coming here. We have to find out about these things on a Friday package, and then hurry up and try and reply. So again, I would take a step back, ask for your staff to find all of these, start having the discussion, and see if you have a bigger issue than you really know about, rather than having us to come up here and answer these one at a time. Thanks.
Thank you, Todd.
Next speaker is Daniel Murphy. After Mr. Murphy is Robert O'Neill.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Dyer, council members, it's good to see you again. I always enjoy being in front of you. I would like to say it was referenced about Ocean Park in the Civic League, since I am the president of the Civic League, that we did meet with city staff on a number of issues with the beach accesses. Not only this one, there were several others. There was an issue with a outflow pipe at the Whispering Oaks one that we have met with. I was aware of this one. I think what I would like to ask is that if, I would like to request that you postpone any decision on this. This was dropped on, what, Thursday afternoon? I had heard about issues with this. I knew there was some contention about that. I've seen emails going back to as far as 2019 on it. Unfortunately, you know, as a civic league, I do not make decisions and dictate what they're going to do. I rely on my members and the residents to tell me what we should get involved in and what stance we should take. Dropping it on a Thursday and then having a Tuesday meeting does not allow me to give you any input to what either the Civic League or our residents think. We did send out an email alerting them to that because I don't know if you're going to give us a deferral. I would expect you to because I think you want civic engagement. One of the things that I've talked about before has been Councilwoman Henley's and Councilman Rouse's public, enhanced public engagement proposal. I think that's a great idea. I support that. I wish that would come back. I did look through it and reread it. I'm not sure that city-sponsored ordinances would fall under that purview, but I would ask that you address that as well, because that's what the real issue has become, is that we don't have any time to respond and give you input on those things. It happened with the Orsted management, and it almost happened with the dredge transfer station, except for Councilmember Moss and Miles stepped in, and we negotiated a settlement that was good for all of us. So what I would respectfully ask you is to defer this and allow us to provide you input.
Thanks a bunch.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Robert O'Neill. And then the last speaker is Tim Spolnik.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Robert O'Neill, and I've been a resident of Ocean Park for over 38 years. I'm a licensed engineer, and I've walked this path in this right-of-way countless times during those 38 years. Okay? My beef is timing. I've heard council mention timing. This matter's been out there about two and a half years. Okay? And I get four days business, you know, business days notice, six days calendar notice to respond. Let's look at the timeline. Okay? June 2020, the city is made aware of the encroachments. January 25th, 2021, from Nancy Bloom, the path has been, the right-of-way has been surveyed. The property owner has been notified of the encroachments and told to send in applications or remove the encroachments. Nancy also noted that one of the property owners had alleged that the city had vacated part of the right-of-way. Okay? The city had to investigate that. Moving forward to June 28, 2021, again from Nancy Bloom, city still waiting on the applications, but the city had determined had not vacated its own right-of-way. Oh, that's nice to know. Moving forward another year to November 2022, the applications are filed, and here we are today in December. Okay? And four days' notice for the residents is really not adequate time for me or anybody else to properly respond to it. Moving on to the application, I've got the same concerns. It says that, the city says that there are other similar encroachments in the Ocean Park right-of-ways. I don't know of any fire pit in a right-of-way at the beach in Ocean Park. I got to go find one. I haven't had time. I've heard comments that the city path, access path, actually crosses the property owner's property line. According to this exhibit, the path that we use to get to the beach is to the east of his property line. It's separated by a fence, 1.96 feet difference at the closest point. Okay? I also noticed in this package that there are no letters of support from any residents or other property owners. I questioned that after all this time. All I'm asking you, give us time, myself included, to respond to this with the attention it needs. That's all. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Tim Spolnik.
Tim, how you doing? Haven't seen you in a while.
I know, in this beautiful facility right here, too. And I'm glad you brought that up. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Dehaney, Mr. Stiles, my name is Tim Spolnik. I live in awesome Ocean Park in the Bayfront area. I'm totally changing what I was going to say, because I will leave you with this. What Mr. Burnick said about the policy going forward, I happen to be in the informal, in the city manager's office after Dewberry made their presentation in 2018. The tension in the room was incredible as all of city council and staff realizes how screwed Virginia Beach is with sea level rise. This application, or whatever's going on here, has potential to directly impact land use going forward that's going to impact the bond, 567 million out of 3 billion. It could potentially impact the 20 billion necessary for sea level rise mitigation in the future. So we just need to defer this indefinitely, as Mr. Burnick mentioned, to have some kind of policy moving forward, because the future 20, 30, 40 years are not going to be the same as the previous 20, 30, 40 years. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Tim. Good seeing you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Delcino.
This is my district, and I appreciate all the speakers. And you know I'm a big proponent of community engagement, and I feel that that was lacking here for this particular application. I really do. Mr. Burnick, I appreciate your comments and your thoughts, and I think it's perhaps a good way to take a look at a holistic approach for the city versus the piecemeal approach, as he mentioned. So I would like to move for defer, that we defer this indefinitely.
Second.
Okay. Motion to second to defer. Any comments? Okay, John and then Linwood.
No, we've invested a lot of money in digitizing our geography of Virginia Beach. And I know we also do flyovers to back. So I, what I don't understand is often we're getting these decision support material, we never get this, all this digitized information that we should be able to see the digital footprint of the whole Bayfront. And since that's digitized, we should be able to overlay where our, where these right-of-ways are and where the easements are, and we should be able to visualize the encroachments. And we should be able to have a comprehensive look, because we've paid for all this data, but we never get it to use to make decisions. So I hope as we go and look at this comprehensive policy, that we actually go in, and rather than just looking at the application that comes from the particular property owner, is to get the value added of this geodetic infrastructure that we've paid for. And so we can see all of this, because then we can see how big is this? We went through this with parking, you may remember, down at Sandbridge, with people putting stuff, encroachments where we park it on the side street. So I hope as they proceed this, that we leverage the infrastructure, the digital infrastructure we've paid for to help us comprehensively look at this issue, because I'm sure we're going to find lots of people who might be wanting to make claims on their title insurance that didn't capture their unauthorized encroachments. But the fact that it's been there forever doesn't mean it gets to stay there forever, you know, if it doesn't fit in with the policy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Linwood and Barbara.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have had some calls from folks in, at the North End also about these encroachment issues, and I don't know which body oversees it. I know we have a resort advisory commission for the resort area, and I think the Bayfront Advisory Commission might be helpful over in the Bay Beaches. But the North End, I don't know that we have an advisory body for them other than the Civic League, but this is something I think we need to get a handle on. And however we can do it, City Manager, I'd love to see us pursue and not be in on the tail end of these encroachment issues. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that real quick, Mr. Mayor, because I did find out that this particular, these types of applications do not have to go to those advisory groups. They come directly to us. So there needs to be, that's all the more reason to have a more comprehensive game plan.
Okay, Barbara.
Well, we, we are in the process of looking at the canals in the southern part of the city and those encroachments, which had sort of grown too. So I think we have one that's supposed to come back to us next week. I haven't heard anything in any change, but I do think a holistic approach to all kinds of encroachments is kind of important. We've been very lenient in the past.
Okay.
I don't know if we want to do this or not, but we might want to consider getting beaches and waterways back in action, because the waterways like Barbara's talking about and on the beaches, this seems to be on the beaches, this seems to be, they're only called when there is an issue. And so there hasn't been an issue since short-term rentals. So that might be a good commission to send it to. And Mr. Duhany has something he wants to say.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is this something where you want us to just put a moratorium on and find and figure out a group to get this to vet before it goes to council?
Not be adverse to that. Anybody else have an objection to it?
No.
Okay, moratorium and then action, correct? Okay.
I would only suggest, I think whenever we delay something, no matter how long it is, I think we ought to have an idea of what, what is the action that we're going to take? Who has the lead for the action and what's the suspense date? Otherwise, stuff just rolls on like waves in the ocean. So, and obviously, if you're going to have accountability, it means someone has to be accountable for doing it. So maybe what we should say is rather than trying to solve it here tonight, is ask the city manager to come back after the first of the year with the new council and say, here's, I recommend the plan of attack and a timeline rather than trying to set it tonight, is just have him come back with what he thinks is doable because it's going to be staff doing it, not us. So he's got a lot of things on his plate. That'd just be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, does anybody object to Mr. Moss's recommendation that Patrick come, you know, early January with some recommendations on organization and timelines for that? Okay. All right, votes open.
By vote of 11 to 0, this item has been deferred indefinitely.
Okay, great. And then on to number 10, organs to authorize temporary encroachments into the bulkhead. This is another one, construct and maintain vinyl bulkhead, wharf and four pile boatlifts at 2304 Windward Shore Drive.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Steve Gibson.
Okay, these, this is another encroachment, bulkhead, temporary. There's no such thing as temporary, into the portion of city on property, maintain existing bulkhead, construct and maintain vinyl bulkhead, wharf and four pile boatlifts. This was discussed at the last meeting. Somebody wanted, you know, a roof on theirs and it... I'm glad Todd Solomon's talking about civic engagement, but you can't have reasonable civic engagement or reasonable meetings when you have too many items on the agenda and you have people waiting.
Could you please stick to the item?
I am sticking to what you just voted on. You have too many items on the agenda. You're making people wait. You go back and forth. I mean, thank God you're deferring indefinitely on some things and I appreciate Mr. Berlucci's But you can't outsource everything to committees that you appoint and expect any reasonable honesty and integrity and, and looking out for the citizens. You know, what you send to each other is not what we get. And Todd talked about getting the, I think he belongs to suburban focus group. You can get the, if your neighborhood is involved, you can get the agenda early, but it's not the full agenda. The full agenda doesn't go up until Friday and that's not due process. Thank you.
That's not true. The second, I'm sorry, the next speaker is Steve Gibson.
Hey, welcome.
Again, I'll be very brief. Again, the North Virginia Beach Civic League is, would ask you for the policy and program, but we would, there's one other thing which I would also like to tack on to Councilman Moss's request to the city. A number of these encroachments which occur, people do them. They, they don't ask for your permission. They, they do them and then they come in and ask for forgiveness after the fact. It's, sorry. Sorry, whenever a policeman approaches me with a gun, I try to smile.
It was an equipment malfunction.
I'm with you. All right, thank you. But residents simply do it. And again, the resident who planted palm trees, they just went 60 feet into the dunes and planted palm trees. Why? Because they could. From the city's perspective, who's in charge of the dunes? I know the answer. It's landscaping, it's beaches, it's public works, it's real estate, the list goes on. It depends upon what day. I would like to also ask that as you look at all of these encroachments, if you find somebody doing something today, don't work with, direct city staff, not to work with the resident as to how to maintain it, but to tell them to stop. It's a radical concept, tell them to stop. Because we have, again, I was just telling Clay earlier, we have a resident at the North End who's approached me and he called and he said, hey, I want to, from the Civic League, he said, hey, I want to put a hot tub in. And my answer was, I don't care. He said, no, no, I want to go 35 feet into the dunes. I want to create a 30 by 30 area and I want to create a little sitting area for my hot tub. And I said, you can't do that. He said, who's going to stop me? He said, I'm going to put it in and it's going to be after the fact. Nobody will stop me. The resident who put in the pool, city did the inspections, then he came in and topped off a dune, created a 20 by 50, nice sitting area. The city has it, but they have not told him to stop all the other work. I'd love to meet with the city manager and tell him what's going on, but I would ask you to tell them to stop.
Thank you, sir.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, Linwood.
Thank you, Mayor. So this seems to be a different kind of encroachment. This isn't, doesn't go into a dune line or anything. This is, and it's not an after-the-fact request, they want to construct a boatlift into a canal over at Bay Island and it appears from the map that there have been other boatlifts approved over time. So unless I'm missing something, I would make a motion to approve this particular application.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Vote open.
One second. The votes open. Councilman Henley, may I have your vote? Thank you.
It's just not registered.
Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved the application.
Okay, thank you. Now moving on to planning, item K1.
Yes, sir, we have number 11.
Oh, 11? Ah, my goodness, sorry about that. Okay, number 11, a $2 million appropriated 2 million for tourism investment program. Tip and thing, oh, yep, my goodness, we got to talk about this one. Executives to sponsorship agreement with something in the water.
The first speaker is Barbara Messner.
I forgot to bring the other chart. This, something in the water is outrageous. And it's illegal. What you did, selling tickets when there wasn't financing and approval is outrageous. That's fraud. People bought tickets in some, okay, so $2 million, $2 million for entertainment to fill hotel rooms. You should have built an arena 20 years ago, but you don't want to build an arena because then people wouldn't be filling the hotel rooms. They wouldn't be going to all the breweries, they wouldn't be ticket-in tow. I can't believe how many cars I saw being towed by affordable renting, rentals. You have signs out there saying on Atlantic Avenue, two-hour limits. Who can park their car and go some...
The item is something in the water.
It is. And you, you are approving money for something when we don't have transportation, use the school buses? That was a $350 million expense in 2019 and you're rewarding crime. We don't need entertainment in the off-season, you're just greedy. So, you know, we shouldn't be paying for it. Authorized city manager, and I already told you about the conflicts, Something in the Water LLC. Pharrell is worth multi-millions. He doesn't live here. He just comes here to do business and Mr. Branch, Mr. Holcomb, Mr. Rouse, who's missed multiple meetings, you know, they flew to New York with Pharrell. So I'm opposed. It's ridiculous.
In case there's a taller speaker. The next speaker is Diana Howard and after Ms. Howard is Edward Walls.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Yes, Mr. Holcomb.
For clarification, I've never been to New York.
I heard they wouldn't let you in.
Yeah, I could tell by your accent, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Delcino.
Yeah. I think, could we ask the city manager to clarify that the city did not sell tickets to Something in the Water?
Mr. Mayor, the Councilmember Miles, that's correct. The city did not sell tickets and the city was not aware that tickets were going to be sold.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Diana Howard. I'm the chair of the Virginia Beach Tea Party and let me first say, we thought that Something in the Water was a wonderful, positive event and we're glad you brought it back. However, $2 million for sponsorship, what, what are you all thinking? I mean, what did you base that criteria on? We had a $1.1 million in revenue generated to the city out of that, but we had a $1.3 million expense. So we didn't make money. So who's going to pay for all of this, right? Where is that coming out of? You're giving them the but-for taxes, right? So they sold tickets and on the first day, they sold out, first and second tier completely, right? So only the expensive tickets left, right? So you're going to give them the but-for taxes, amusement, meals, sales between 4th Street and 15th Street, I think it said, right? How far back? Atlantic, Pacific, further? Doesn't say, right? Are you going to like ignore short-term rentals during this time because you know, a whole bunch of them popped up last time? Hotels are busy over there raising their prices really high. I think they call that price gouging, right? So you're not giving them that. So I'm sure, you know, all that money is going to the tip fund. Well, more than half of it anyway goes to the tip fund, some goes to the tap. But, so it's not coming to the city. I mean, it comes there first and then you give it to the ocean front. So are they going to be paying for the drivers for the buses? They're going to be paying for all the city staff? They're going to be paying for our first responders, for our security, our police department? They're going to pay for all the overtime? What is that going to come out of? Is that going to come out of the tip fund too or is that going to come out of us, right? So I'd like to ask for an audit. I want an audit, okay? Do I have to put that in writing? I want this whole thing audited from the time you all tried to get it here, what it cost us, and if we get any revenue, where that revenue is going. I think we need to know, we, the residents, the taxpayers of Virginia Beach, want to know if we get any return on investment and who's exactly going to get it. Okay? Thank you.
The last speaker is Edward Walls. Are you Mr. Walls? Perfect, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me tonight. My name's Edward Walls. I represent a local brand in Virginia Beach called Team Lamb. Brief background on us, Team Lamb is an acronym for tell everyone around me, love all my brothers. We were established in 2011 in memory of our friend, Caderrel Little Lamb Simpkins, who was a professional boxer who did, died due to gun violence down here at the Virginia Beach Ocean Front. Since then, we asked his family for a blessing to take his nickname Lamb and create this brand in memory of him. We've grown to be so much more. We do stuff in the community. What we do, events, we do events, we host events, we're active in our community as far as giving back our time. We also have a clothing line. So the reason why I'm here tonight is because I just wanted to speak on the funds being allocated for Something in the Water. I wrote some brief notes, so please bear with me. Pharrell's involvement to bring Something in the Water to Virginia Beach or back to Virginia Beach originally in 2019, they solved a problem that we had down here, which was College Beach Weekend. In 2019, the city provided, quote me if I'm being accurate, over 100K towards Something in the Water. That money helped that, that money helped make that event one to remember. I personally worked with PWG Live, who was the production company who put on Something in the Water the first year. Behind the scenes from Thursday to Sunday, when I arrived back home on Monday, I regressed and I was like, wow, I felt like I was out of town, but I was actually in my backyard at the Ocean Front the whole time. So imagine what a budget, well, to my opinion, that weekend, the Ocean Front transformed. I felt, again, I felt like I was out of state somewhere. So with, being said, with that 100K budget to 2.2 million budget, imagine what we could transform the Ocean Front into that weekend. Something in the Water provided a need, I'm sorry, filled a need in a solution, which was planned programming. That's why College Beach Weekend was such a headache. We had people from all over come in town not knowing what to do. Used to have 18-year-olds on the Ocean Front who can't drink, who aren't 21, who can't get in clubs. So they're messing up the hotel rooms, getting in fights on the strip. Pharrell nipped that in the bud when he brought this planned programming. The economic pack impact of Something in the Water. This event turns our tourist area season, which is unofficial start to it, coming off of a harsh winter where most of these businesses are in the red, immediately they turn into the green. In 2019, Something in the Water brought overall 23 million dollars.
Ed, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work, guys.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion? Yep, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approval and then I have some, some comments for discussion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion, Barbara?
I just have a question. I'm not sure where the $2 million figure, how that was arrived at. I mean, we're still talking about but-for money?
Mr. Adams will come and clarify, but we're talking about but-for money, the my understanding,
It's called bringing up the reserves.
Dana, you want to speak to the 2 million?
So all of this has to be generated. The 2 million is a budget number, as in it is, at this point, really a not-to-exceed number. And so this allows us to execute the sponsorship agreement, authorizing the but-for revenues to be returned to them after an accounting after the event. Up to that $2 million, if they exceed that, we will come back to you guys, asking for a supplemental appropriation so we can honor the rest of the commitment in the sponsorship agreement.
So, so to answer your question, Ms. Henley, yes, we are still looking at but-for taxes or basically but-for taxes being contributed and we also anticipate that there will be a request for in-kind services. However, it's important for me to note at this point, because you all had not approved this appropriation and approved this contract, we've not, we've not advanced our conversation with Mr. Williams' team to the point that we've got a document ready for you all to execute. But Dana's right, we needed, we needed to reserve the funds to dem... We needed, we needed to reserve the funds to demonstrate that they were available, so that we could carry that on. So, so yes, this is a 100% but-for deal. From an incentive standpoint, we do anticipate that there will be a request for in-kind services pending this action tonight, assuming you all were to approve it. We would go complete that, finish our work, and hopefully have a, hopefully duplicate what happened in 2019 and maybe grow on it.
Mr. Mayor, can I make my comments now?
Okay. Rosemary.
It's just really, it's confusing the way it's written up. Because, I mean, we knew that we, when we talked about it, it was a $500,000 advance that was going to go to the but-for money. And then it was but-for. But this looks like we're just doing it, $2 million, and you know, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if you could have done it any better, but the way it's written up, it's very confusing for the public.
I'll apologize for that, Vice Mayor. We, and going forward, we'll take that note. But certainly, we see that the wording has caused some confusion. And I'll just, I'll just say that we were moving pretty quickly to make sure that we could deliver on the timeline that we had. And I apologize for any confusion that we caused. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else?
Just a quick question.
Okay. Lynn would, and then Aaron.
So, the parameters of the but-for area, could you describe them for us?
As is proposed at present, council member, we anticipate that the but-for revenues are confined to the footprint of the actual festival. Now, I can't tell you-
What's that? We anticipate that there to be a special use permit from the southern bound to the northern bound. So, I believe we said 4th Street to 15th Street. And then assume also eastward from the boardwalk would be the special event permit.
But, but that said, it's important for us to note that we're not holding that special event permit application yet. But yes, sir, we believe that to be true.
Thank you, Mr. M. So, I think it's important, because, do you have something else, Dana?
Just make sure you're good with that.
We're good. Thank you. I think it's important that we understand how we got here. And understanding that back in 2019, the city asked Pharrell Williams for his help. The city reached out to Pharrell Williams and asked him for his help to help us solve an issue with College Beach Weekend. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit of numbers. Historically, on that weekend alone, without any activations, the city was spending approximately $260,000, $69,000 on that weekend alone, with no activation, just on our first responders out there. And so, when it reached out to Pharrell Williams, asked him to bring this great idea, the city said, okay, well, we'll sponsor First Year Festival, $250,000. That's less than what the city was spending in just for security down there, for our first responders down there. $250,000 sponsorship cash. The other portion of that was in-kind services for the convention center, which is approximately $800-some thousand dollars. We don't do that anymore. And Mr. Adams or the city manager can speak to that. We've learned a lot from in-kind services, that we no longer do that type of in-kind services anymore, where we attribute it to a festival or event weekend. Hence, I think there's example of another event coming here. But with that being said, altogether, the total sponsorship was about around $1 million. But a large portion of that came from in-kind services. One of the things that's so important that we talk about, well, what are we getting back? Well, aside from the business aspect of $21.7 million economic impact to our city, was also has been a $24 million economic impact to our region, which is great. We're getting back a huge value when it comes to advertising the city of Virginia Beach as a tourist destination. Not only that, we have also assigned a value to that advertisement from Something in the Water that reached around the world, that reached in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Adams, I know you're in the back, but I think we assigned a value of $40-some million. If you look at that, and you compare it to what we spend in the tourism tap fund, what we spend to advertise in different places around our country about, to advertise in our city, that's about $12 million. So, we're getting a lot more in return than what we are allocating for this festival. I can't even begin to tell you the intangibles of bringing a community together that reaches across, excuse me, across all generations. The inherent ability of this festival to make sure everyone in Virginia Beach is celebrated, this diverse culture that we have. We can't tell you the, begin to explain to you the value of sending that signal nation and worldwide that will make Virginia Beach a place to call home to those millennials that are on the move, that make up the largest portion of the workforce today in America. This festival is returning a lot more with tremendous potential and value to continuously not only bring in more economic dollars and tax revenue for our community, but also that feeling of belonging, that feeling of inclusiveness, that feeling that says, this is a place I want to be, I want to raise my family, I want to raise my kids. And that is in large part thanks to Mr. Williams. Large part is thanks to this council for reaching out to Mr. Williams. So, I want to make sure that when there's talk about, you know, and I've heard, everyone has their opinion, which they rightfully do, there's talks about somehow that Mr. Williams is taking something from the city that couldn't be more, more false. He's actually giving to the city, this community. Last point I will make is, that First Year Festival, again, was the city sponsored around $1 million. And I was proud to be the liaison for it. That First Year Festival, Mr. Williams spent over $16 million of his own capital influence bringing world acts here, supporting our schools, supporting our nonprofits, many of nonprofits. And the city reaped the rewards, you reaped the rewards of $1.1 million in free tax but-for revenue. And again, to me, that is a great economic deal. That's a great deal. I would take any day if I was to invest $250,000 cash and get back $1.1 million of free money to do what you all will have us do with it. To me, that is a great, a great deal. So, again, this is about creating that partnership. I'm proud to, along with my other colleagues, to welcome the festival back to our city of Virginia Beach, assuming that this, this is passed tonight. And I'm proud to have, I've been the liaison for this. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Moss.
I have some questions. If Mr. Taylor, I don't think Kevin's here, but Mr. Adams can come forward. It'd be great.
I'd just like to follow up on your earlier testimony. Is the 2 million a guarantee in the event that the but-for doesn't equal 2 million that we, because it gets back to the wording, because it says, fund and authorize $2 million, and there's no condition on that statement?
No, sir. So, going back to Dana's comment, an amount not to exceed is a great way to think of that. But no, sir, it is not a guarantee of the 2 million. It has, it must be performed against.
Okay. That's good. I need further-
Well, we did add text also at the bottom of the ordinance, to be sure that it was not characterized as a guarantee, that the money had to be earned by the festival.
But we do not have a legally prescriptive definition of the boundaries for the but-for taxes, geographical areas. Is that correct?
So, important to note, the festival organizer has provided us the meets and bounds that Mr. Harmeyer mentioned earlier. I just don't have that an approved special event permit to give to you at this point.
And do we know, based on historic, the average collection of revenues to the city from that area that we would collect, whether or not we had a festival or not, so that we're only getting, benefit, we're only yielding back the really net gain versus the baseline?
I don't have that specifically for the geographic area as defined at present, to be able to, to basically isolate down to the G-PIN for that particular area and tell you. We could look at the weekends in past, but I couldn't give you just the area.
For the sale of tickets that were to beach residents, which is displacement revenue, because it's not net gain revenue to the economy, it's money that's already here, do we know how many tickets that is?
No, sir. We do not have ticket sales as yet. Obviously, also important to note, as we've not advanced our contract, that's not been something that we've been able to, to tell them to give us yet. But we do anticipate having that information very soon.
You know what? I know this is out-of-budget cycle expenditure. I've decided to bring that up. But the, but I think, when, you know, and Dr. Cook is here, you know, used to tell us about, you can't calculate revenue that's reallocation of revenue that's already in the economy. That's not a net gain. Have we done any estimate of what the real net gain is to the unrestricted general fund?
No, sir, not at this point. Obviously, yeah, it's the term that you all have most often heard us describe as displacement, displaced revenues within the economy. And council member, as we don't have ticket sales and don't have revenues to plus in, we don't have enough data to give you that, to give you that factor. But certainly, we do anticipate that we'll do the same full and robust fiscal impact on the back end of the event, assuming you all approve it, that we do on all major festivals.
What, you know, tonight, we've had a lot of discussion about how much, how well we understood, and how much planning, and how much detail we had relative to making decisions and making them out of cycle, and not knowing what the downside risk was and what the exit strategy. And so, here we are tonight with no business case analysis that really tells us that what the net gain is. We don't know how much of its displacement revenue. And we're really betting all of it with no cap on the in-kind expenditures. There's no limit here on in-kind. And we're saying that whatever that cost is, we believe the intangible gains, and I think Mr. Rouse did articulate those very well, that the intangible gains are worth any cost, and we put no top-line limit on what the city's liability is for this event. Am I incorrect?
Council member, I don't disagree with that. I would, I would mention the one, one thing that we discussed with you prior was that because we combined your participation to specifically the event footprint, that any hotel and restaurant tax and general sales tax generated outside of the confines of the, of the event would benefit the city directly. But, but to your point, I can't give you any, any sort of indication of what that number would be. So, yes, sir.
Well, I'm just, I think this is, and I think Mrs. Howard said nicely, this is a great event. But in the end, but who would ever go into business to always never make a profit and say, but for the revenues, I wouldn't have this thing? But you don't gain any net benefit to your company. So, people, the only dividend that we see is a net increase in the unrestricted general fund.
Yes, sir.
And if that number, if the in-kind services, which basically come out of the unrestricted general fund, if that number is read, the only thing that makes money is the gross revenues to the resort or these trustee accounts and the sponsor.
Yes, sir.
And that all our gains are intangible. So, if we're making our business case on the intangible and branding, which I think Mr. Rouse made some good points there, then we just ought to admit that it's financially negative. It's, if we break even on the general fund, we consider it luck, and we're doing it for something other than making money. Because really, unless I get a dividend as a taxpayer, someone tells me, hey, I reduced your real estate taxes, or I built a new school because I have this unexpected net gain in the unrestricted general fund, I didn't gain anything.
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to, but maybe the branding is worth it. But I think we just ought to tell the story how it is. And not, and my view is, we're voting for it because we think the branding is worth it, and the intangibles are worth it. But I'd hate to think that we can't give tax relief because it took all those surplus revenues to pay the overhead cost for the event. And the fact is that we don't have a cost structure and accounting structure that allows us to know that answer is a shame on us. We really, we really need to make sure going into this event, that we have the, we have the accounting codes and the cost codes, and we really can know and tell the people what was the real dividend in addition to the intangibles. Because right now, we, we don't have any, I'm not assured that we can ever convince someone of what did we get? You know, because that's, that's what people in the heartland, when you go out and ask them, where's my dividend? You know, I didn't sell a room for $1,400. And I think it's great, you know, if the market will pay it. But they want to know, what did they get for the opportunity cost of those in-kind services? Because we didn't budget for this event and in-kind. So, either, one, we had something we funded that we now didn't fund, or we've used our accumulated under-execution and payroll in other areas to pay those bills, to pay that overtime, to pay whatever that is, then that's tax relief we didn't get. That's an opportunity cost. I just think we need to, to be honest. And from a fiduciary point of view, I don't know how I vote for something when I don't know the upside or the downside risk. But I just want to, I know you understand that.
Yes, sir.
And I know we're wanting to do this independent of the cost, but my fiduciary responsibility doesn't allow me to be as generous with money I didn't earn. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Okay. Aaron.
Yeah. So, while I respect Mr. Moss's, his position as well, and I think, I just want to bring some clarity. There is economic increases to our revenues from this festival. There's indirect revenues that from filling up hotels, filling up restaurants, traveling, the indirect spending for such, you know, service stations, stores, small businesses, all the local businesses that will be activated when this festival come to town. So, there is an increase in, economic increase in revenue when it comes to this festival. And a festival, mind you, in its first year, that made money for the city. It didn't lose money, but it made money. And so, I just want to just, just clarify that with respect to, to Mr. Moss's position and his perspective. Thank you.
Okay. If I can make a comment before we get to the vote. You know, I think this is a very important event for a lot of reasons. And, you know, I think in a lot of ways, it's how we define ourselves as a community. As Ed from Team Lamb said, you know, this filled in for a weekend that did not define the city of Virginia Beach well, but Something in the Water did. What it did was, you know, it was not only Something in the Water, there was Something in the Air. And it was called positivity. It was called community. It was called, it was youth going around high-fiving, you know, the cops, the state troopers, the EMS, and the group people. You know, the type of positivity we're hoping to put into a bottle and make that part of who we are as a city every weekend at the Oceanfront. Now, due to a number of circumstances, it was interrupted. And I can tell you pretty much as being an only recently minted mayor, the difficulty it is when we had the COVID hit us. You know, we had the state of the city on St. Patrick's Day, and the next day, the entire city shut down. Oh, but don't worry, it was only going to be two weeks, remember? It was two years. And the pain that we went through as a council and a community in canceling, canceling the Shamrock Marathon, the Rock and Roll Marathon, Something in the Water, the Neptune Festival, that was tough. And we lost some momentum, but, you know, we're getting it back. And the thing is, it gave us, and, you know, I just want to applaud Mr. Rouse for, you know, making some very good points. But, you know, this gave us passive advertising throughout the entire world about who we are, defining us as Virginia Beach. Come to Virginia Beach and be welcome. And there is an accounting term that's out there, it's called goodwill. It's actually, from what I understand, a bit of a tangible asset that, you know, any organization that brings forward something as positive, it brings value. But once again, what we're talking about, an event that's going to be in April, which in essence is going to launch the summer for us. And once again, I bring forward a question, and I, you know, and I say this, and how we came together as a community- we came together as a community, I'm hard pressed to find a community that made it through COVID than this body did, that our city did, or our city staff, all the people that are up there have been working. But this is going to launch a summer after we went through COVID, after we've gone through inflation challenges and everything like that. We are going to start the summer in a very, very positive way that can carry on the momentum through the rest of the summer. We got a lot of good stuff coming here this summer. But to have an event in April to get us jump started on us, I think is of tremendous value. It also sends a message that Virginia Beach is back and we're going to be better. So I enthusiastically endorse this. But also, you know, to address Mr. Moss's concern, our sincere hope that this was going to be from now on a legacy event. And as we get the business plans modified and get things going and, you know, tweak from year to year and have it grow in magnitude, you know, I think we got a lot of good things to look forward to. So at this point, the vote is open.
Nellie may have your vote, please. Thank you. By a vote of 10 to 1, you have approved this ordinance.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, now onto some planning items. K1, Atlantic Development Associates LLC and WPL Ventures LLC for variance to section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations, raise subdivide two lots at 11173rd Street, District 6, formerly Lynn Haven, deferred from August 9.
Mr. Burdon.
Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Mayor Dyer. For the record, Eddie Burdon representing the applications, but as you all got correspondence from me last week talking about this application and then another one yesterday, it's my understanding, well, we're asking for a deferral to January 17. Councilman Branch was away and indicated to me on Monday that the, and I confirmed it with Mr. Tahan, that there's a meeting scheduled for tomorrow with the Civic League Subcommittee again to discuss some ideas they have. And so we, you know, we, and I called all of the folks on 73rd Street who are coming down to support the application and asked them not to come tonight, told them they'd be wasting their, their evening. So we appreciate a deferral to January 17.
Okay, so you're recommending a deferral. Okay. Thank you, Eddie.
Well, the next, I'm sorry, we have additional speakers. The next speaker is Steve Gibson. Okay. Barbara Messner.
Atlantic Development Associates LLC, WPL Ventures LLC, Billy Almond of The Rack, who's been there since the 80s or 90s, and his partner, Brian Large. Subdivision regulations, two lots at 11173rd Street, District 6, formerly 5 Lynn Haven, deferred from August 9. The entire oceanfront is, there's nothing left. You keep adding high-density projects. You tear down all of the trees. We have more flooding and, and traffic. Talking about your problems with the noise. I mean, people get frustrated. They drive reckless when you have, plus there isn't parking. You did this with short-term rentals. You allow people that don't have enough parking to buy spaces in parking garages that are supposed to be for the public? That's illegal. You've been doing it for a long time. So I'm, I'm in opposition. And I'll, I'll look at the pictures because I know it was Linwood, Rouse and Duhany. But I'll look at the pictures for you, Mr. Howard.
The next, sorry. The next speaker is Martin Warnet. I don't believe he's here. That's all the speakers.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this one?
Yes, Mayor, I think Mr. Burdon gave me a good entree. I'd make a motion for a deferral till January 17 on this.
Okay, motion. Okay, let's open the vote on this.
Tower, may I have your vote, please? I'm sorry, Mr. Rouse. By a vote of 11 to 0, this item has been deferred to January 17, 2023.
Okay, and then finally, the recommendation, SXCW Properties, the second LLC for conditional use permits, or a car wash facility and automotive station at 3264 Holland Road.
Chris Pockta, sorry if I said your last name wrong, representing the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of City Council. My name's Chris Pockta. I'm a local real estate and land use attorney here at Virginia Beach, and I represent the applicant. And this project is SXCW Properties 2 LLC. They do business as Sam's Express Car Wash. And this site and this application has a, a little bit of important history that I thought I might share with you tonight. And first, it was, it was before this council, this body, back in 2017, under a different plan, different circumstances in the area, but it was back before this council then. It's the same client, however. And this client, Sam's Express Car Wash, they're, they're based out of Matthews, North Carolina, and they've come to Virginia Beach to do business. This will be their second site in Virginia Beach. They approved for one in Sandbridge off of Fisher Arch earlier this summer. And they hire from the local community. They're engaged, I have not seen an applicant, I think, more engaged in, in the communities in which they, in which they serve and in which they operate. And just last year, they contributed over $500,000 to local nonprofits, sports leagues, civic leagues in the areas in which they operate. They recycle 90% of their water. They use biodegradable chemicals. They're privately owned and operated, and they offer state-of-the-art equipment for sound and noise mitigation, something that sets them apart as a company. As I mentioned, their project in this site was before City Council back in 2017. And previously, prior to 2017, there was a shopping center that was approved on this site when it was first beginning to be developed. This is the, adjacent to the Amstel Square area off of Holland Road. Our clients then purchased the land just a day after, I believe, or a day before the 2017 City Council hearing. And back in 2017, the Planning Commission had recommended approval. There was an out parcel as part of the development that could have been set aside for further B2 by right development. This was the plan in 2017. And residents back then, they, they, they expressed opposition for traffic reasons, for crime, for noise. And so Sam's withdrew their application. There was a motion at council, I believe by Councilmember Wood, to defer it, to give our client an opportunity to engage the community. So our clients, they withdrew their application, and that's precisely what they've been doing for the last five years, is looking at the plan to see how can we tailor this plan? How can we change it? How can we revise it to address some of the concerns of this community? Traffic, noise, landscaping? And so they got to work and they hired me. And some of us on the team went door to door, asking residents, what do you think of this plan? What are, what are some of your concerns? What are some of your complaints? I believe I knocked on every single door on Old Clubhouse Road that's just adjacent to the property, all the way into Yarborough, and then the side that's just behind the Lidl there. And what I learned was, one, there are some very pleasant people that live there, some wonderful neighbors, some of them who are here, some speaking in opposition, some speaking in support, some wonderful people in the community. And one thing they expressed was that they didn't like how the Lidl and some of the other by right development came about, and they had no say-so in the matter. So they appreciated the fact that, at least a lot of the folks that I spoke with, they appreciated the fact that they were able to weigh in that their, some of their concerns were being addressed. They loved the idea of, and you'll see in your plan, the revision to remove the B2 out parcel and to instead replace that with, with a BMP, with a walking trail, with a lot of green space, with some additional landscaping, some screening. And so we held a virtual meeting. We held an in-person meeting at the Central Library. We engaged the Civic Association. I personally spoke to the police captain for the precinct to see how could we adjust our plan in any way? How could we enhance it so that security measures are heightened to address the crime? So that landscape screening or landscape buffering is enhanced, if it can be, to prevent any unnecessary noise and shield all that as possible? And there were members of Holland Farms Community, this is adjacent to this property, Scarborough Square, and then also the Cardinal Estates, which is just to the rear. All these folks are affected and impacted by the, by the commercial development that happens just up the road. So we had neighbors and champions of, of the kind of development that we're looking to do in this exact project, like I said, knocking door to door, asking folks their opinions and their thoughts. And so what we did was we revised the plan, as I mentioned, and that's what you see before you. We got to the Planning Commission back in September, and they recommended approval once again, 10 to 1. I have to thank the staff, the Planning Commission that you appointed, and also the staff has done a tremendous job on this project, all the projects they do, devoting a significant amount of time to seeing how we could address any of the concerns of the residents, how we could make this plan one that fits with the city's ordinances, but also one that makes it a good neighbor, which is what this client is. So one thing that was requested, and we revised the plan to address, was that we reduced the hours of operation. This is the only site of all their 48 sites that they have had to reduce and were willing to reduce the hours of operation for the gas station, I'm sorry, for the car wash, to bring it down to 8 o'clock, when every other site they have is at 9, because they want to invest in the community this much. And the other thing they did was they increased the landscaping buffer. So typically, you need a 15-foot buffer along Old Clubhouse there. What they did was they put down large tree canopies. In addition to that, and as an additional buffer, shrubbery, followed by more canopy trees. And you'll see the entire site is lined with trees and shrubbery and robust landscaping. Because what they wanted to do is they wanted to make sure that sound was not going to be an issue for these residents. They wanted to make sure that they were going to be a good resident and that they were going to contribute to the employability of the area, offering jobs, reaching out to people to offer jobs to the community. And they have done that every step of the way. Now, as I've engaged the community, I've recognized that there do remain some points of opposition. And I know some of the folks who are here tonight are going to express those same things. And, and they've been very charitable in doing so with me. It's been, it's been a pleasure to engage them. But one thing that they did mention, and they have time and time again, is traffic. And so in looking at the plan back in 2017 and now, and talking with the traffic engineers for the city of Virginia Beach, and also talking to the Planning Department, we have, we have come to the conclusion, after very thorough vetting, that this proposal would generate a significant amount less in terms of traffic than the average B2 by right use that could go on this site. So what could happen in talking with planning and the traffic engineers is that by right, in other words, sort of like the Lidl development or the rest of Amstel Square, what could go there by right is at least two, potentially three, by right uses. And those three would generate approximately 500 to 600 more trips per day than our site. So taking that into consideration, the traffic being, being the major concern of, of the folks, at least that I've talked to that were in opposition, we, we went to the drawing board, we talked with planning, and we arrived at what we thought was, and a consensus from the folks whose doors I knocked on, was a, a solution that resolved and solved a lot of these problems and that these folks were willing to get behind. So there's some folks here that are from Sam's who've come in from Charlotte, and they drove here and are going back tonight. And, and they're eager to, I think, as the mayor said, to, to be welcome to Virginia Beach, to do business here in Virginia Beach. And then Councilman Dyer, now Mayor Dyer, said in 2017, he said, you know, this body, and I, and I have taken this to heart as I've, I've looked back at the transcripts and this plan, he said, this body is not about picking winners or losers. And that's not about what the city is nor this body. But it is to say, we are welcome and open for business. And our client, Sam's Express Car Wash, is eager to do business in the city of Virginia Beach and to be a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker, I'm sorry, is Linda Russell. After Ms. Russell, is Barbara Messner.
I'm from the Cardinal Estates neighborhood, and I know a lot of you. And the reason I don't know some of you is my son back there and his sister have kept me inside with the corn of brown and everything. So now I'm, I'm back in business, okay? And I am for Sam's, you know, I was for it when it was here before. And as we prepare for the future, today, we live in the present. I hope that I have provided you with some information from the past. And we spent a lot of money, like they said, to get people here. And these people have spent a lot of money to get here. And I do hope that you will approve this. You've already approved one in Sandbridge. You've, they've got another one coming in Newtown Road. So I do hope that you will approve this. Okay, I think this is the best for, my neighborhood, you know, was there first. And so I've seen a lot of changes, all the changes, you know, it was us in Scarborough Square, Green Run and everything. So I've been here since the beginning. And like Barbara, when I open my mouth, I'm going to tell a story, okay? And I do have a few maps, too, not as many as she has, but I do, I feel the way, same way about my community and Cardinal Estates as, as she does about hers. And thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Messner. After Ms. Messner, is Lynn Henry.
Glad y'all are enjoying your snacks. At least five of you are munching. There are so many gas stations that you approve, car washes that you approve. Most of them stay empty. This one says formerly District 3 Rose Hall. The whole election thing is just a convoluted mess. But this is a service station. They said they would limit the hours on the, on the car wash, but they, I don't believe they said anything about the service station. And anyone that has gas stock, you know, would have to abstain. So traffic is a problem. It isn't just, it isn't just the neighbors who live there, if they even know what's going on. It affects all the delivery drivers. It affects the mail service. It affects trash pickup. So people drive all over the city. Just because we don't live in a neighborhood doesn't mean that we don't go there for something. You have businesses in almost every neighborhood, which is outrageous. You know, they're not paying taxes. You know, they're not paying taxes. You know, they're using their homes. And our police are stretched way too thin. So are our fire and EMS. And you shouldn't add to the burden. And I, I do want to speak on open mic since I'm here this late. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lynn Henry. After Ms. Henry is Nidra Howard.
Good evening.
Good evening. I want to go back a little bit further in history because this is actually the third time we've, Civic League Scarborough Square has opposed something very similar on this property. In 2010, a gas station car wash convenience store called Raceco was proposed for this site, and City Council unanimously voted no. In 2017, of course, Sam's came into the picture. We had over 433 signed petitions, signatures. And once again, City Council did not approve the project. Shannon Kane, our City Council person at the time, actually asked the group that was here, well, in the old building. And we told her we wanted to take our chances with the by right business. The issues haven't changed. In fact, their numbers are they can turn a car over in five minutes, curb to curb, for a car wash. We want whatever goes in this property to be successful. But that's a lot of cars in a day. We've seen the traffic that the car spa generates. So we know what's going to happen if this goes in there. The issues haven't changed. In fact, they've been compounded by the new Lidl and Hardee's and the other businesses that have been built since 2017. Traffic, crime, trash, and noise. This project only makes those issues worse. I've emailed you all many times. I'm sure you've gotten them. So I'm not going to go into the details of that. But then it comes to need. The car spa is 700 feet away from this property. Shell, 7-Eleven, 76, all offer gas less than a mile away at Ship's Corner. BP at Holland Road in Dam Neck offers car, car wash and gas also. The conditional use permit system is in place for a reason. What's the point of a cut process if the area will be allowed to become saturated? We understand this land is its own business, and anything could go on this property. We have the same concerns that we had in 2010 and 2017. There are many other uses with low traffic and low noise that could go on this site, such as professional offices, church, youth facility, senior care. The list goes on. We would like to hope that a desirable project will emerge. We would like to see a business that would better fit the community. The city has used a phrase, and it used to be considered a motto, a community for a lifetime. And we are here for the duration. Please don't get me wrong. This is a beautiful plan. The Sam's people are very nice. The walking path, the water area, and the new signage for Scarborough would be very pretty and really appreciated. But the traffic, crime, and noise this project would cause would affect our quality of life daily for the residents of Scarborough Square and the surrounding communities. We're asking you that you vote no. Today, I have 203 signatures, actually 208, but seven of them came since yesterday, since I printed it, in opposition. And we please request that you vote no on this conditional use permit. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nidra Howard. Oh, you're fine. And then Carl Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here once again. Nidra Howard, representing Scarborough Square. Been a resident 17 years as a homeowner. I oppose the Sam's Express project. It's a beautiful project, but not for Scarborough Square for the third time. And I'm not going to repeat the things Lynn just, just went over. But I will skip down to some additional things that are important to me and our community as well. When seconds count, the last thing we need is another high-traffic establishment at Holland and Warwick. Okay. The traffic at the intersection is already congested and accident-prone on any given day. Imagine a fire, a choking infant at 4:00 p.m. How long will it take EMS to get through the traffic from Station 18 on Lynn Haven Parkway? Or the rescue squad from South Plaza? Think about it. Could the logistics of this proposal delay EMS from an emergency where seconds count? Yes. What happens when the brain doesn't get enough oxygen? It's called cerebral hypoxia. Basically, the brain cells begin to die. And that can happen within five minutes. Imagine sitting in that traffic any day. It's already congested. We don't need anything that's, oh, we can do this many cars in five minutes. Okay, to stay in business, you need to do a certain amount. So they would be bringing a lot more traffic than what we already have. Many things can affect oxygen flow to the brain, choking, strangulation, suffocation, drowning, head injuries, a fall, elderly person, heart attack, so many things. We don't need anything that's going to increase the traffic problem that we already have. COVID, so many deaths that you may, most of us know somebody that knows somebody if it didn't affect us personally. Quality of life has to be the most important thing. When people live in a neighborhood, when I bought my house, I didn't buy my house to have to move because so many things are interfering with coming and going or sitting in traffic trying to get out or sitting in traffic trying to get home. We don't need it. It's a duplicate service.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Wright. And then after Mr. Wright, Chris Pakta can come back for rebuttal.
Carl, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Happy holidays, everyone. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I concur with these folks here. This is the third time. And, and I like, you know, the project was nice. You know, it looks nice, but it's just not the right fit for that community. It's already overburdened with other issues and that type of thing, you know? And it just, it's just not a place. You got a, I think, within a three-minute walk, you got four car washes. I don't know how they plan to make money with four car washes within a three-minute walk, but I know there's one at Ship's Corner. There's one at Lynn Haven. There's one behind Lynn Haven. There's one a few blocks up. And I appreciate these four good folks for coming out of town. But see, they're going back home. And these folks got to live with the aftereffect. We have to live with the aftereffect. So I would hope that you all would and support this because it's been, been before us the city several times. It didn't work then, it's not working now. I don't know what has changed. You know, you put up some shrubbery and you fixed the line, but that doesn't change the impact on the community. I did have a conversation with this gentleman. We talked a couple of times. And he was a nice gentleman, it's a nice project. But it's just not the right project for this community. And I think we can all agree on that. And I think they've made out pretty well. He said he's already, they've had two approved. So, you know, I mean, two out of three ain't bad. So, you know, I mean, I would hope that you guys would, would give the community some benefit of the doubt. And then let's help them. Maybe they'll find another location. But it's not only just the traffic. It's the sa, it's the safety issue. There's a lot of other issues over there in the community. So once again, I hope that we can move on from this here because like, this thing goes back to 2010. And I guess they're determined to wash some cars up there. But right, right now, I don't think the community is really, you know, in the, looking for another car wash. I mean, you know, so that's all I have to say. I hope we could move on from this and hope that they found another location. Thank you.
Mr. Pakta.
Thank you, members of council. Just to clarify a couple of things and make a final statement. The first one is this. There's an, there's an option for our clients, and I think the same option is presented to you. And the option our clients have is, one, to develop this into the business that they do, which is a car wash. That's who they are, that's what they do, that's the service they provide. And they have that option. And in fact, they, they're so eager to invest in our community, in this city, that they've been holding out for five years and engaging in the community and going back to the drawing board time and time again, despite when their attorney says, nope, not good enough. Bring it back to me again with something better that the community will sign on with. They have that option to develop that. The other option is for them to accept one of the several offers that they've received and inquiries over the last five years, and especially recently in this market, to purchase the property from a by right developer. And what would that by right developer build? Well, some of the by right uses I mentioned before. Fast food, convenience store, dry cleaners, self-storage, et cetera. They're not, they don't receive offers from churches or senior care facilities because that's, that's not what the market is dictating in that area. So, so that's the option that they have, and that's the option that you're presented with. And if, and if we go with the second option, where our client's approval is not granted, then what will happen is drastically more traffic will be generated, drastically more. So just as a matter of numbers in reference, McDonald's, for example, is a by right use in this area. Just, just one. And remember, this site could serve two or three. Just one by right use. That one by right use McDonald's, on average, generates twice as much traffic as our site plan, as our client does. A Chick-fil-A, I don't even want to bore you with these numbers, but four times the amount, another by right use. And that's just one by right use. That's the other option on the table. I, I think those concerns are, are valid and important ones, traffic, crime, et cetera. And that's why what we've done is we've gone back to the drawing board time and time again. We've devoted a significant amount of time to community engagement, engaging with the Planning Commission to develop a plan that meets all of those requirements. And, and lastly, and I think most importantly, is that not only, we, we didn't circulate an online petition. We, we could have done that. Instead, we went door to door. And I asked the people that live there, mother with young children, single gentlemen, multi-generational homes, what do you think of this plan? What do you want going here? And time and time again, they were pleased with the plan presented, and they were glad to hear that my client, Sam's Express Car Wash, wants to invest in their community and in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, at this point, do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to deny the application. And upon receipt of a second, I'd like to just explain the rationale for.
Do we have a second for the denial? Okay, Mr. Buluchi.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I just want to thank everyone who has made the time to be here. First and foremost, the residents of Scarborough Square, Cardinal Estates, and the neighborhoods that surround the property in question. You sat through a long meeting and heard lots of different important discussions. But it's really a testament to your dedication to our city and to your neighborhood and our community that you were here to do that. I also want to thank the applicant, Sam's Express, for being here. You also have sat through a long meeting. And, and compliment you, really, on the work that you've done to be responsive to the concerns that have been raised over the conversations that have occurred over, as Mr. Pakta, I think, very astutely pointed out, many years. And I think Mr. Pakta himself deserves some recognition for the really outstanding work that he's done to represent his client, Sam's Express Car Wash. I spent a lot of time talking to him through this process, and I really appreciate the professional, considerate, responsive approach that he's taken. And in light of the conversation you heard previously, it's really important that, as a council member, I'm able to receive answers to the questions that I ask so that I can do the job that I've been asked of the citizens to do. And, and so I very much appreciate that.
Okay, any other comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor. And I, I think really, though, what you've heard from is the neighborhood, who have clearly expressed that they would rather not have a car wash on this site. And the basis for their logic is that they live next to a car wash already. Just a quick look at any map will show you that they live next door to, I think it's called Car Spa, Car Wash Detail and Oil Change, which is in operation while offering a different product, is certainly one that is comparable to the product that will be offered by Sam's Express Car Wash. Through experience, they have developed, I think, a very rational position about the appropriate use of this process. And that's why the conditional use process exists. I respect their position. I think it's based in experience and many years of discussion. I came into it sort of on the, somewhere in the middle. I don't know where you want to call it, the middle or the tail end. But I think it's my responsibility and my job to reflect their wishes about the type of community they want to live in and to represent their views here today. And that's the basis for my denial. The other thing I want to say is that we really need to pay special attention to this neighborhood. Scarborough Square is, in many ways, an underserved community. There are people there who are experiencing many of the most serious social challenges that we see in our community, including issues related to public safety, to litter, to the integrity of landscaping and structures. And we should really be looking at this neighborhood as one where we can connect them to the vital resources that we have to offer as a city, of programming, code enforcement support, public safety support, and make sure that we can lift up every member of this community in a way that's reflective of our values as a community and as a city. And I look forward to working with you as a member of City Council to achieve that goal. And I'm thankful for this introduction to you and this opportunity to work more closely with you so that we can work together on those issues. And thank you all very much.
Any other comment? Okay, vote is open for denial. Okay.
Councilmember Henley and Rouse, may I have your vote? By a vote of 10 to 0, with Councilmember Moss abstaining, you have denied this application.
Mr. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While Exxon wasn't identified as a, in the disclosure statement, Exxon is on the signs in the graphic display for the application. And I have substantial holdings in Exxon Corporation, so I have filed a conflict of interest statement letter that's on file, and that's the reason for my abstention.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes the regular business. And now we are ready for appointments. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Active Transportation Advisory Committee to reappoint Brian Hickman and then extend Dee Oliver to February 28, 2023 as the Planning Commission Liaison. The Atlantic Park Community Development Authority reappoint councilmembers Henley and Holcomb. Bayfront Advisory Commission reappoint William Hurst and extend James Frankenfield and David Redman to February 28, 2023, as Planning Commission Liaisons. Board of Zoning Appeals appoint James Wood and reappoint Kevin Newton. The Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Board appoint Steve Ballard. Community Services Board appoint Barbara Booker-Williams, Dr. Robert Crawford, Brianna Dempsey, Vanessa Griffin, and Thomas Russell, and reappoint Patty Osbaugh and Todd Walker. The Eastern Virginia Medical School Board appoint Preston White. The Green Ribbon Committee appoint William McLean as the Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association representative and extend David Weiner to February 28, 2023, as Planning Commission Liaison. Historic Preservation Commission reappoint Harriet Frenzel, Bobby Grobel, and Kristi Lyons. The Military Economic Development Advisory Committee appoint John Cummings. Open Space Advisory Committee extend Jill Yule to February 28, 2023, as Parks and Rec Commission Liaison. Parks and Rec Commission extend Jill Yule to February 28, 2023. The Planning Commission extend George Alcarez, David Bradley, Holly Quaylar, James Frankenfield, Dee Oliver, Jack Wall, Dave Redman, and David Weiner to February 28, 2023. The Resort Advisory Commission to reappoint Elizabeth Bowman, Charles Caton, Lori Overhold, and Michael Ronan. And the T.A., I.T.A. Citizen Advisory Committee appoint Phyllis Sawyer. And the Wetlands Board appoint Jared Katzer as the alternate member. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the vote is open.
Mr. Moss and Mr. Branch, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed those named by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Okay, are we getting ready for open-mic session?
Sir.
Do we have speakers?
We do, yes, sir. But I need you to adjourn the formal session first.
Okay, we are adjourned and moving to open-mic session.